May I please have the real call?
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sananian.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here.
May I please have your report?
Before we commence with the report, if we can all please rise for the flag salute, which will be led by Councilmember Agajanian, followed by the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Rich Garner, Senior Pastor at First United Methodist Church of Glendale.
Please say the flag salute along with me. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the common public, where it stands one nation under God, in the visible, veritable, and just as far.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Events near and far, O God, challenge us to remember that we are called to care for your creation, all of it, and most particularly for your children who inhabit this earth as home, a place and time where we can live out our dreams, our visions. As we raise up leaders, charge them, O God, with the responsibility of holding before them the needs of this community, heard in the cries of suffering individuals, and in the hope for a future rich with purposeful, fulfilling living. We give thanks for those who take up opportunities, sometimes ordinary, even heroic action, to respond to the flood of fear and the fire of threat. Declare to us that the power we have to make a difference in our community is a gift to be employed for the benefit of all. Humble us with the sacred possibilities that are inherent in every task required of us, and cause us to seek others who will join us in bearing burdens together, so that justice will flourish and joy will blossom, both together bearing the fruit of sacrificial service. Bless us with love, both offered and received. It is because the Holy is present to us on this day that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And may I please have your report now?
Currently, the agenda for the September 5, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, September 1, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
At this time, I want to turn the floor to my colleague, the Chair of the Housing Authority, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. Okay, we've been in recess for a closed session, so I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn, the Housing Authority.
I'll move to adjourn.
A second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next is the presentation on appointments. At 3:00 is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, September 12, 2017. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Garpetian, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 PM. We have one business agenda item, Glendale Homeless Continuum of Care Funding Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the 2017 program completion. We do have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority that afternoon as well. This is Director of Community Services and Parks. This is the 2017-18 submission of grant application to the state of California under the Emergency Solution Grant Program. That evening for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, under consent, we have Fire Chief, this is a renewal of an agreement with the City of Lockenada, Flintridge, regarding joint use of Glendale's household hazardous waste facility. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the GWP power content mix for the calendar year 2016-17, and it's a note and file report. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, status of the Glendale Water and Power Energy Storage Procurement Target. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Amendment Number One to our Transmission Services Agreement, that is number 10929. Under Action Items, we have one item, Fire Chief, this is the Fire Recruit Academy for fiscal year 2018. And under Hearings, we have, I believe, six items, and all of these hearings are for the Glendale Register nominations, and I will read off the addresses. The first one is 408 Ross Street, second is 1235 North Louis Street, next is 1524 Majestic Way, fourth is 1051 West Mountain Street, and lastly is 3193 Vista Delmar Drive. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. What is next?
Next is the Consent Items, including minutes, and in fact, on this consent calendar, there's only minutes. All in our routine, and may be acted upon by one motion.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian. Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, the City Council and Staff Comments.
Oh, we have, before we make our comments, I would like to ask Chief Fish to come up and give us a quick report as the eventful weekend that we had, and go from there. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And members of the City Council, it has been quite a week for the Glendale Fire Department and for the Glendale Police Department, and quite frankly, for a lot of the other departments within the city. Public Works has been tapped out, Water and Power has been, Parks, it's just been, it's been one of those weeks that you, this is one to be remembered. I want to bring you up to speed on where we're at on the Latuna Canyon Fire, give you a brief history of what happened over the past couple of days, and from there, I hopefully will be able to answer any of your questions. Currently, as it stands right now, there are 30 active incidents, active major fires within the state of California, and obviously, multiple resources have been dispatched to these incidents. And you know you're busy when you have 300 requests that are unable to fill for a variety of reasons, but mostly because there's nothing left in the system. The system is pretty much on drawdown right now. Again, in the Glendale area, we are very fortunate to have a fantastic relationship with our neighboring partner agencies, Los Angeles City, LA County, and the U.S. Forest Service in Burbank. So it makes for a robust response, and that's exactly what we had on Friday. The Latuna Canyon Fire update, real quick, its acreage is about 7,194, 70% contained. We still are unable to determine the cause. It's still under active investigation by the LA City Fire Department. As you well know, the 210 freeway has been reopened, which is good. There's still some other road closures in LA City, but all the roads are open in Glendale, and there is no more voluntary or mandatory evacuations for the city of Glendale. Single residences destroyed in the city of Los Angeles, these are all in the city of Los Angeles, was five, and other structures, outbuildings and such, we have five as well. The weather, you can tell what the weather is today, it was kind of warm, it's supposed to heat back up. We're looking for a wind test and a heat test on our fire lines within the next couple of days. And you can see that there was some heat-related injuries, none to any of the Glendale Fire Department, which is actually miraculous when you think about the work that was done over the last week. The Latuna Canyon acreage, when you look at the pink area in the bottom right-hand section of that, let me see if I could point it out, this area right in here is what the city of Glendale, the acreage that burned in the city of Glendale, which is about 450 acres. To put that in perspective with past fires that we've had, in 2014, we had that brush fire on June 22, if you remember that, up above Brand Park. That was about 150 acres. So this is about three times the size of that. So that's quite a large chunk of land, and it's mostly up in the wilderness area of the Verdigo Mountains up on top. And we're very fortunate that we had a fire break that was put in place by dozers, and we're also very fortunate that most of that fire stayed on the other side of the ridge. So we're not going to have, as it stands right now, we're not going to have a real big problem with drainage coming into the city of Glendale. We're very fortunate in that aspect. So you can see, about, what we figured was about 6% of the total acreage belongs to Glendale. And you can see on this map, this is the map as of this morning at 10 o'clock, we have, anywhere that you see the black outline, that's where it is, we have an active, or we have a control line. The rest of it, where it's red, is where we don't have controlled lines. That is probably going to be a lot less at the 6 o'clock briefing tonight. So there will be a new map that's going to be generated, and those red lines are probably going to turn to a lot of black. My guess is that we should probably be up to at least 80% contained by the 6 o'clock report tonight. So, what did we have at the Glendale impact during this fire? We had, at the height of the incident, we had seven engine companies within the city out deployed, we had two water tenders, two patrols, and four chief officers on the incident. A total of 41 Glendale Fire Department personnel were deployed to the incident. Remember, in our overtime and staffing presentation, that we only have 50 on duty at any given time. So that means that we did an emergency recall, and our people stepped up to the plate and hit a home run in that aspect. We got tremendous response from off-duty firefighters to come in and staff back. Mind you, and we'll show you in a couple of slides how exhausted these firefighters were. 250 Glendale homes were threatened at one time. Of course, we did not lose or damage any of these homes, which is just fantastic. Our mandatory evacuations were for the areas of Glenwood Oaks and Mountain Oaks Park, and we lifted those, we had a voluntary evacuation for Whiting Woods for a few days, and that was also lifted. The EOC was activated by my call at 6 o'clock in the morning, on Saturday morning, when we did implement those evacuation orders. And I will say this, the city of Los Angeles Chief Ralph Terazas has boasted, and I'm going to boast too, right? It's all about brush clearance. Give me brush clearance, and I'm going to be able to send my firefighters to be successful in your area. If not, it's a gamble, and I don't like gambling with people's homes or loved ones. And so if you clear your brush, the message is, we're going to do a lot better operation, and we're going to save a lot more property than if you don't clear your brush. If you need information on how to clear your brush, you can go on our website, on glendaleca.gov, just look for the fire link, and go into the Vegetation Management under Fire Prevention. There's all kinds of information on how to clear your brush properly and how to make your lot fire safe. Backing up a little bit, you can see we had quite an active week. On the 26th of August, we had a house fire on Glenmore at 7:49 PM. I don't know if you remember, but we had a pretty significant house fire on Cleveland as well. That day, it was 108 degrees outside. We deployed 51 firefighters from our department in Pasadena and Burbank to a house fire. That's unheard of. Well, the reason why that was, was because we were tapping out these firefighters so fast, they were exhausted from the heat, and they were working so hard that we couldn't send them back in for a second shift. We had to rehab them. One firefighter actually was hospitalized during that fire. So as it relates to work being done previous to the 1st of September, there was a house fire that really put us on our heels. Second was the, the third thing, the third item in here is the Latuna Canyon brush fire that started at around 2 o'clock, when we got requested to, we were dispatched, we dispatched a full assignment to Latuna and the 210. And again, you saw the devastation that was done to the brush in that area, and how fast they jumped the freeway. I will say this, on a side note, I know what it's like personally to have your home threatened by fire, because my house was right in the line of that flaming front. So the work that was done by not only the Glendale Fire Department, the LA City Fire Department, the Pasadena Fire Department, LA County, was just phenomenal, and I can't say enough. That same day, at 5:47 in the evening, we had a recycling yard fire across the tracks, if you guys know where that recycling yard is on the other side of the freeway off of Doran. A very difficult fire, again, very hot out, taxing the firefighters even more. That night, I'm sorry, the next night, we had a school fire at a Montessori school on Pennsylvania, another house fire. While all of our resources are deployed, working on the Latuna fire, these are incidents that were occurring. And then that same night, at 2:27 in the morning, Pasadena had a second alarm that we sent units to. So it was a very busy day. To give you perspective on how busy that day was, the Verdigo Fire Communication Center answered 940 calls for service on September 1. A typical day is about 500 calls for service. Let me tell you, your Verdigo Fire Communication Center was stellar that day. I have the utmost pride in how they performed. There were four people in the center that day, and they were incredible. And I want that to be known to everybody, because that is just a great example of what collaboration does. They dispatched for 14 agencies that day, and they did a fantastic job. Again, during the Latuna Canyon Fire, the Glendale Fire Department handled an additional 20 emergency responses between 2 o'clock PM and 7 o'clock PM on September 1. This is in addition to the fact that we were all committed to that Latuna Canyon Fire. This was something that, I'm so overwhelmed by the generosity of our community, it's just, it's humbling. We had strike teams from Orange County and from the South Bay, protecting our homes up in Glenwood Oaks and Mountain Oaks Park, and even patrolling in the Whiting Woods area. These firefighters came up to me on many occasions and said, "This community is incredible. I want to live here." And I said, "Really? Why would you say that?" And they said, "You got to go into the CB Park, it's like a rec room there." The people were incredible. The firefighters were pulling into the center to get some water and some food, and they get applause by the community. And I was, I mean, there was at least 50 people there, receiving the firefighters, giving them cold towels, Visine, fresh socks, you name it, it was their food, water, they were barbecuing, the Boy Scouts were barbecuing hamburgers and hot dogs. What an outpouring of generosity on behalf of the people in that area. So that was just something that, it's a shot in the arm for those exhausted firefighters. They needed it, and it was like the community knew it, and they rose to the challenge. The Latuna Canyon Fire had all these agencies and departments involved, working in collaboration to make sure that the fire was brought under control, and you can see a lot of your departments with, here within the city of Glendale, stepped up. And I also want to say one thing before I take any questions, and that is, the EOC was activated on Saturday morning, and without fail, every department was represented in the EOC. They did it with a smile on their face, they came in on their holiday weekend, they showed up, they performed, and it was just, it was incredible to see. A holiday weekend, I mean, that's like, you know, that's pretty revered with a lot of people, not even a question, they showed up, and they really performed well. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Agajanian.
You know, when you say 10% contained, apparently doesn't mean 90% are not contained, right? What it means by 10% contained, of course, now we have 70, but, I mean, in the beginning, people, they were worried that if it's 10% contained, it means 90% is not contained, so it's very dangerous. But apparently, it's not that way, if you can explain that.
Okay, so we have, there's a difference between confined and contained. So confined means we've confined the fire to a box per se, right? If you were to draw four lines around the fire, we're going to confine the fire in this box. Containment means that we actually have a line around it. So it can either be concrete line, like the freeway, or it can be a street, or it can be a sidewalk, or it can be a drainage, a concrete drainage. Or, if there's none of that, we have to cut the brush down, and we have to go all the way down to mineral earth, and it's about a three-foot swath, and when that swath is cut in place, that's when you know you have containment. And so that black line that I had around there, that's all, all of that area has been contained by that hard work done by those crews. So they have to get out there, chainsaws, they have to, it goes vertical, a three-foot swath goes vertical. So there's a tremendous amount of work involved. The fuel bed in here is absolutely incredible, as you well know, and you may have heard, that those fuels on the north slope of the Verdigo have not burned since 1964. It's like a jungle in those areas up there. There's 20-foot canopies up there, and there's ladder fuels that go all the way. Those fuels were baking for a good four or five days at north of 100 degrees every single day. So imagine if you put a plant inside of the oven for 24 hours, and your average temperature's probably 95 degrees, it dries those things out, it prepares them to burn much better than they would otherwise burn, regardless of the fuel moisture. So that's what we had in that particular case, was a very primed fire, ready to go, and all it had was a small little introduction of flame, and the next thing you know, it's off to the races.
And second one, you said we have to clean the brushes around the house.
Yes.
How far definitely should be cleaned?
We should, you should have at least 100 feet of clearance between any hazardous vegetation and a structure, at least 100 feet. Now, in the city of Los Angeles, it's 200 feet, we're not that. We don't believe that 200 feet is going to be good for the natural vegetation. We can get in within 100 feet and save your house. So if you can give me 100 feet in Glendale, I'm going to be happy, and our troops are going to be happy, and we're going to be able to do a lot of good.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? I have one question for you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I learned a lot this weekend about firefighting, and the EOC, and how the departments come together, and they know what to do. And just about a week ago, we were asking our city manager as to, give us a presentation, if anything happens, how are we prepared? And this was a live presentation, basically, as to what's happening in case of emergency. I know by now what it is, but I want you to maybe explain to people that, how this fire gets out of hand all of a sudden, when we think we contained it, and you mentioned the plume formation or plume fire, and how dangerous that is. And I want you to please explain to our public what that means.
Well, okay, so what we had in this particular case was a number of times where we call it a plume-dominated fire. And when you have a plume, a plume, what happens during a plume is, the energy that's being released from the fire is so intense that it rises up into the atmosphere, into the upper levels of the atmosphere. When it gets to about 30,000 feet, it starts to do what we call icing out or capping. When it ices out, it gets so heavy at that point that it literally releases and falls down back on itself. When it does that, what happened was before, the fire was feeding the wind into the fire. When it caps out and releases, it does just the opposite. So what you can, you can be in the middle of a firefight, and you got your wind at your back, the fire's in front of you, everything's okay, no problem. When it caps out and it releases, that plume domination now takes the wind and reverses it, and literally blows fire in your face. It happened on three different occasions during this incident, and I got to tell you, there's nothing that fears, that firefighters fear more than a plume-dominated fire when it releases, because there's just no predicting when it's going to happen.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions?
No comments?
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Comments, yes?
Comments, I just want to, you know, kind of reiterate what everyone in our city, I think, is saying, and that is the fact that we have the best fire department in the state or anywhere around. I visited the shelters, and I wanted to give a shout out, I want to thank staff, because they were fantastic. Those, the staff people that manned the shelters, Red Cross up in, at the Crescent Valley Shelter, and at the Civic Auditorium, Gabrielle and Eileen, Maggie, Leo, Servag, and Laura were there, and were helping everyone that came in. A couple was there with their animals, and I want to give a shout out to the Humane Society, because we called as soon as the couple came in, the call was made to the Humane Society, you know, we have animals here, and they said, "Well, we're an hour out." And they were there in 20 minutes to take these pets and take care of them. So they were at the ready and supporting us, and from Pasadena, I imagine, giving us all the help we need. And I know that you are giving kudos to everyone but yourself, and I just want to say that you did a spectacular job. Supervisor Barker told me, she pulled me aside, and she said, "You have the best, Chief." She said, "He was stellar, so good under pressure." And then she looked at me, and she said, "But you know that." And I said, "Yeah, I do." So thank you for your hard work as well. It's much appreciated. I think the fact that we lost no homes, I think that is the most, the best news of all. And I know it was because of all the hard work, and I have to say that, you know, we get a lot of complaints about your salaries, but I think this last weekend, you all earned it, and we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, and yes, thank you, Chief, and all the men in your department. And I've had an ongoing battle, if you will, with a group called the Glendale Coalition, whose intent is to remove $20 million going back four years, each year, from our general fund. And of course, we all know that the general fund, the bulk of the general fund, goes to pay police and fire. And I can only have a nightmare as to what our results would have been if we had reduced 20 million, or the proportionate share of that, in our police and fire departments this past week. You saved homes, you saved lives, you saved businesses, you saved animals. And so when folks say that they're for public safety, I support public safety, I support the police and fire. Folks, it's one or the other. You're either going to support police and fire, or you're going to support a group that wants to cut the general fund and reduce staffing to police and fire. It's simple as that. You can't be on both sides of the issue. It's either one or the other. That goes for council members, that goes for the press, that goes for members of the public. It's one or the other. And it's been clear where my sentiments lie, Chief. It lies with the police and fire department and our public safety. You saved so much from us. And Mr. Mohill, I'll say it again, I'll say it till the last whistle of smoke is gone, that we deserve the very best police and fire that money can buy. Did you hear that? That's what I'm saying. Now, I don't want to overlook some of our other fine departments. You had a whole list of departments that contributed to the welfare of our safety, the GWP workers, the Public Works Department, many other departments, and they get kudos also. But this was a team effort, led by Chief, your department, police, as well as our management team, and our mayor, and the council members that were present. I'm very proud. And folks, it takes, sometimes it takes an incident like this, where you're that close from losing your home and your businesses, that you have to appreciate and set your priorities as to what we want for a city. And as for me, this is exactly what I want. This is the way Glendale has to be run, now, tomorrow, and for years to come. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes, I would like to express my appreciation for the hard work of firefighters and yourself in fighting the recent and largest fire in, I guess, LA County history. I visited the evacuation center set up at CV High School, and I was happy to note that there were more volunteers than evacuees, which was very reassuring. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you know how I feel, Chief. First, I want to congratulate you and thank you for your hard work. As you mentioned, the EOC was activated at 6:30 or 6 o'clock Saturday morning. When I came in, every department was there, and they all knew what to do. And just a few numbers, there were 206 engines involved, six helicopters, five water tenders or water droppers, four dozers, and nine ambulances, and 1,061 firefighters to fight this fire. And I got to tell you, it's every department together. Police and fire, of course, they were in the front line, and we assured the neighborhoods that was evacuated that their houses are not going to be looted, there's not going to be any issues. We had patrols, police department did a great job. And when we went drive around with the city manager, and the assistant city manager, and myself, and your chief, then you really realize and understand how difficult this job is when you fight these fires on steep hills, and there's brush all over the place, and the wind can change and push that fire right up against your face. So I want to thank every department that was there, the management, Public Works, Parks Department, GWP, planning, the PIOs, and also my fellow council members, because we were all involved in this. We're not in that lineup business, but we were there for our support, whatever we could do. And also the community, the amount of support that came in, as you mentioned, was, that's invaluable, you can't put a value on that. I believe we just purchased one meal the very first time, and the rest of it was all, you know, so much food, and we overate, you know, but, yeah, it was, it was, it was, this is when you know you live in a great city, in a great community, when there's a natural disaster, everybody comes together. I also visited some of the shelters, and they were really well-equipped, and they were protecting the people who needed help. It was, it's very important that, in these cases, we all come together and really do the best to protect our neighborhoods, but they, you know, they asked me, what is it that, you know, every time we had a briefing, every few had a briefing every few hours, they'd ask me, do you have anything to say? I said, I'll let the professionals handle the work, but be safe first because you can replace the structure, but you cannot replace a human life. And that was my thing, that we wanted all of our personnel to be safe, which is very important to us. And thank you, Chief, you've done a great job. And that's why you're a chief, so.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's give the chief a hand.
Thank you. So what's next, Mr. Katsakian?
Mr. Mayor, next item is community event announcements and the three-minute oral communication or public comment portion.
Okay, I was asked by the members of the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association to move the five minutes public oral communications session to the front of the meeting so they won't have to wait for a long time because last week they were here. And what a week you chose to come last week. I mean, it was, it was not an easy week for any of us. So I'm going to do that and I'm going to let Mr. Mohill as well to speak for five minutes if he wants to because three minutes only? Okay. So Mr. Mohill, you're up next. If it's okay by my colleagues to move the...
Of course.
Okay?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to thank the Glendale Fire Department before I start my speech this evening for the work they did, okay? But you know what, LA County did just as well a good job too. Ask the people who lived in, like, Kanata Flintridge, Malibu, Calabasas, they get the same service. It's called contract service, Mr. Najarian. Now, my speech, please. Thank you. Recently, at the 11th hour, a boycott by Armenian-Americans and non-Armenians of the Americana ad brand was called off. Caruso affiliates was not going to allow the advertising billboard of the film Architects of Denial, colonizing genocide through the perspectives of survival of atrocities, including the Armenian genocide. Mr. Caruso was worried his record of wheeling and dealing was going to be exposed and sales would tumble. So he changed his mind. Originally, he was not going to allow the advertising billboard at the Americana. Of the first 12 and 3/4% profit that sales tax and property tax revenue the Americana earns, 100% goes to Mr. Caruso. Also, any profits above 12 and 3/4% were to be split 50-50 between the city and Caruso affiliates. Should the Americana miss their profit goals, its shortening earnings are passed on to the next year. For example, if Mr. Caruso only earned 10 and 3/4% and not 12 and 3/4%, the missed 2% is added to the following year. 12 and 3/4% becomes 14 and 3/4% and so forth and so on. With this arrangement, Mr. Caruso has always made a profit since 2008 at Glendale taxpayers' expense. Where is the Americana mentioned in the city's CAFRA? That's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The financial report card that neither the city council, council members, and city management want to report to the public or to this, on the city website. Is this the report that Mr. Caruso, City Manager Ochoa, Assistant City Manager Beers, our city attorney Garcia were afraid might be made public a few weeks ago before Mr. Caruso approved the advertisement of the film Architects of Denial? There's no net profit for Glendale taxpayers. Americana is a money loser for Glendale taxpayers. Council members, what corrections are this council doing so Glendale taxpayers can see a profit in their investments? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Okay, so we're going to five minutes portion now. First speaker is Joan Morris.
Good evening.
Followed by Linda Pillsbury.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and councilmembers. My name is Joan Morris and I have been a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon for 32 years. But before I begin, I want to echo the thank yous that everyone has been given to, that all the people in Glendale who were involved in battling the massive Latuna fire this past weekend and most especially the awesome firefighters. We are so grateful for them and so appreciative for their work. And they've helped us out many times in Glen Oaks Canyon as well and we're very grateful. The number of us are here today to talk about the Shoal Canyon landfill and its future. We have a couple of topics to cover. First of all, the proposed anaerobic digester. There isn't much specific information about the anaerobic digester on the websites, the Glendale websites, or in the material we've received. We'd like to know more about it because it will directly affect us. So please talk to us about it and we will listen. Number two, closure date for the landfill. Six weeks ago, during oral communications, Audrey Zerokian presented an amended joint powers agreement calling for a closure date of June 30, 2028. This date came from the May 2017 Shoal Canyon Landfill Joint Technical Agreement prepared by the Sanitation District of Los Angeles County. This is when the landfill is estimated to reach capacity and can finally become a recreational area for the public and for the residents of Glen Oaks Canyon, as was promised to us 55 years ago. Please close by 2028 before it's too late. Finally, topic number three, we encourage you not to turn the Shoal Canyon landfill into a campus of integrated waste management with all the many systems that it would entail, including collecting, sorting, digesting, cleanup and power conversion of waste. Our original concerns about the landfill, which we brought up to you earlier during the draft environmental impact report, have not been addressed or remediated. And those concerns are, number one, the landfill has no liner. And what the landfill is resting on is fractured granite. And what that means is all the toxins and pollutants from the landfill are not being captured in a liner, but they're percolating down to the groundwater below. Secondly, the landfill is located on or near major, several major earthquake faults that are active faults. And this is not permissible by today's EPA standards as well. Another huge concern of ours is that the barriers at the top of the canyon that are supposed to prevent toxins from percolating down are not retrofitted for earthquake safety. So if there is an earthquake, these structures, these barriers might crumble and we would all be in danger of the toxins coming down. We are in particular, particularly concerned about having an anaerobic digester on top of active earthquake faults. Imagine this scenario, what if one of these faults should have a major earthquake and the building that is housing the anaerobic digester is damaged, releasing the highly flammable methane into the atmosphere? Let's say a power line also falls and there's a spark and the building erupts in flames. Because it's an earthquake, it is possible that the roads will be impassable and the firefighters won't be able to get up and put the fire out. With all the residences and houses lit around the landfill, you can just imagine what could happen next. This scenario is improbable, but not impossible. As we all know in today's world, considering Hurricane Harvey and its tragic aftermath, the improbable is more probable than we could have ever imagined. City planners are now taking the heat for allowing 7,000 homes in Houston to be built on what the government, federal government had designated as a flood plain. As Glendale's leaders, making decisions for our future, please consider the improbable as well as the probable when you are planning, making plans for the Shoal Canyon landfill. Please close by 2028 before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Pillsbury.
Hi.
Followed by Marie Freeman.
I'm Linda Pillsbury. I've lived in Glendale for 20 years and I work here too. And I'm going to be talking about the siting for the anaerobic digester, where to put it, not whether or not to have it. This is not a NIMBY argument, a not-in-my-backyard argument, but an invitation to work together to find the right place. And just to be clear, so we start with the same premise, an anaerobic digester is an industrial function. So Los Angeles County has a prioritized list, which was approved in 1998 and revised in 2014 and 2016, of siting factors, a basic how to decide where to put things like this. The first thing on the list is to protect the residents. Of the three sites Glendale looked at five years ago, two were in industrial commercial areas and one, Shoal Canyon, is in a residential area. The landfill is only there because of a variance. It is surrounded by homes, apartments, schools and recreation. So it's pretty obvious to me that of the three choices, only Shoal Canyon doesn't meet the first and most important criteria. The second one on LA County's list is structural stability. And Shoal Canyon is near two active earthquake faults, as you just heard from Joan. So that isn't all that stable. The next three on the LA County list are about protecting the air and the water. Anaerobic digestion smells. I mean, everybody knows that, it's pretty clear. And that's much more important in a residential and recreational area than in industrial areas. Would you want your child to be playing soccer or softball and you to be sitting there watching the games for hours and overcome by the noxious odors? In terms of the water, an earthquake within the predicted magnitude would likely break the barriers that Joan mentioned and release hazardous waste into the groundwater. And without the liner, which we're supposed to have and don't have, that means that that toxic water goes directly into the LA River Basin. And traces of highly toxic waste have already been found in the monitoring wells outside the dump barriers. So clearly, the barriers are already not containing the dangerous toxins. So in an earthquake, it would be that much worse. The next thing on LA County's list is protecting environmentally sensitive areas, the land and the animals. I hike regularly in the hills adjacent to the Shoal Canyon site and I've seen rabbits and deer, bobcats and coyotes, and many years ago, the evidence of a mountain lion. This is something really to protect. We live in the city, but we have real animals and real wilderness right here. The next thing on LA County's list is the safe transportation of solid waste. Obviously, more trucks, more noise, more traffic is, you know, more of a problem. And that's a problem for Glendale, but more particularly for Eagle Rock where the access is. But these are residential streets with shops and, you know, schools. And the last things on the list are fitting into the general plan and the legal considerations, which the lawyers have to take up. So from this quick summary of the existing guidelines, we learn that the most important factors are how the proposed project affects people, the residents and the environment. It is pretty clear to me that if we take the guidelines seriously, if we want to build an anaerobic digester, we have to choose a site in an industrial area that will not have a constant detrimental effect on the nearby residents and recreation users. It is also pretty clear to me that Shoal Canyon simply does not meet the state guidelines and that either of the other two would be better possibilities. Five years later, they may not still be available, but we still need to look for industrial sites for an industrial facility. In summary, we need another site for the digester, we need environmental impact reports for the power plant and the anaerobic digester, we need an advisory council for the Shoal Canyon project that includes residents and representatives from the homeowners associations from the affected areas, and we need to close the landfill by 2028. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Linda, what was the, what was the list called that LA uses, their guidelines? What is the...
Um, I've got it back in my notebook. I will, I, it's a list. Marie, do you know? Okay, I've got it. I'll give it...
I'm sorry?
It's the LA County Siting Act.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Do you need it or you have it?
We know it.
He knows it. He knows it. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker is Marie Freeman, followed by Jerry Rankin, followed by Alice Dworkin.
Thank you, first of all, for taking this extra time with us. We greatly appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, my name is Marie Freeman and I've returned tonight because many of the questions that I submitted last year regarding anaerobic digestion and Shoal landfill are still unanswered for us. We still don't know the parameters or characteristics of the proposed system. I'd like to focus on one of several potential risks of siting AD operations, air quality, more specifically odor. I am not an expert, so I base my comments on siting and EIR guidelines from Cal Recycle and SEQA and statements on Glendale's redesigned shoalcanyonlandfill.org, which claims to be, quote, "the authoritative source of the latest Shoal Canyon landfill news, facts and updates." So focusing on odor and AD, the Glendale website states, and it surprised me, quote, "The issue of odor is a red herring. An AD facility is mostly enclosed, methane is either captured or flared and is surrounded by a landfill. If the odor does not exist today, it won't be an issue later." It's hard to know where to begin with this notion because ADs are in many ways not like landfills and all ADs are not alike. Each has its own set of air quality risks. So let's look at AD at a very simple level. Sitting in this room are about 040 or so anaerobic digesters, each one of us, no oxygen where food is processed. So thinking of it that way. Consider where odors arise. At the very beginning, where feedstock is handled, digestible feedstock with no dirt, metal, glass, logs, plastic, if you can't eat it, probably the digester can't digest much of it either. So these have to be cleared away from the rotting organics where that process, that pre-processing and that separation takes place, there will be odor. It's in the air. The decomposing feed continues into the digester, which is completely enclosed and free from oxygen, so no smell while that's going on. The second main source of noxious odors and greenhouse gas is what comes out the other end, three familiar products, contaminated water, which needs to be disposed of in some way, gas, which includes methane, CO2 and hydrogen sulfide, none of which is a particularly good product because digestion and gas collection is not 100%. And the third product is an icky brown stuff called digestate, which when cleaned makes pretty good fertilizer. I toured the Carson wastewater treatment plant recently. It runs 24 50-foot-high anaerobic digesters, 24 hours, seven days a week. A water treatment plant is not a landfill. Water treatment is almost completely enclosed from the beginning to the end. But even at Carson, there's one stage where digestate is exposed to the air, primarily where it's piped down into large trucks for transport. And our guide pointed out that stench does arise, at least at that point. They also spend $70 million a year on odor abatement. Their brochure states, "The facilities and programs necessary for the control of odors are of primary importance. Odor is not a red herring." Nor is air quality a red herring to Cal Recycle and SEQA, who created a model for evaluating the impacts of AD projects in California. The very first significant impact on their matrix is air quality and greenhouse gas. The second significant impact, I'm going to quote, "Operation of AD facilities in California could create objectionable odors affecting a substantial number of people. It's not a red herring to the state regulatory agencies either." Moving from odor to a bigger picture, and there is a bigger picture which is hard to read, but I'm assuming that everybody is fairly familiar with the region. It's a bird's eye view with a two-mile radius around the landfill. So that's two miles from the edge of the landfill, from the point that red, I can't do this very... do this very well.
The pointer won't work on the screen.
From that red spot, that's the center of the landfill, to each part of the circle is about two miles. And you can see what's included in there, everything from Shoal Canyon golf and tennis to the Rose Bowl, to Linda Vista, to, I mean, some very important areas. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I didn't notice the mouse. All right. So there are all kinds of extremely important residential and recreational areas within that two miles. And the two miles is sort of the critical area for effects.
Can I conclude, please, because I have another 12 cards?
All right. In other words, don't keep this place open in perpetuity. Find a good place for anaerobic digestion and let us keep that region safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Jerry Rankin, followed by Alice Dworkin, followed by David Choi.
Hi, I'm Jerry Rankin, and I've been here a number of times in the past. I live in Glen Oaks Canyon. Sixty years ago, a predecessor city council in Glendale, much like yours, was wrestling with the serious problems affecting our city. What should be done with the waste of a rapidly growing city at a time when backyard incinerators are no longer allowed? Landfills were still considered the only viable option for municipal waste disposal in those days. So where, as a city council in 1959, do you put one? Answer: You look for the cheapest, most available property around. Who cares about aesthetics or environmental distractions such as earthquake faults, rapid-flowing seasonal streams? And the fact that the cheapest property is in a beautiful range of hills overlooking both Glendale and Pasadena, surrounded on every side by attractive, growing residential neighborhoods? In 1959, 1960, I was living in Glen Oaks Canyon with my family, young man going to college and doing some military service. The proposed landfill was a major topic in our family. Yet I can't remember anyone talking about an environmental impact report, an EIR. EIR. Did they do EIRs in those days? The answer is no. Environmental impact reports were not required in California until 1970, when our state government passed the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. So I suppose that explains why we have the Shoal Canyon site. We have a Shoal Canyon site which presents an extraordinarily difficult situation for a landfill. It could not have possibly passed muster in a rigorous environmental impact review of the kind required in SEQA. Yet on the city council, yet you on the city council had been patient with the proposal of the county and your city staff to increase the capacity of the landfill through a vertical expansion of 180 feet. It's been more than 10 years since serious planning began for this expansion. Yet the environmental impact report still has not been finalized? For you have wisely insisted on a thorough analysis of all of the many comments the city received opposing the proposed further expansion. Now, some 60 years after your predecessor city council made that fateful decision to begin creating the landfill, you are faced with another troubling decision, whether to continue to support two new proposals, one to build an anaerobic digestion facility and another to install a small power plant at the landfill site. What is the primary purpose of these two proposals? Is the Shoal Canyon site about waste disposal or now suddenly about propping up the city's production of electric power during a time when the Grayson Power Plant can no longer successfully compete in an electricity market featuring decreasing prices on the electric grid? Glendale Water and Power recently issued a document entitled "Embracing New Technologies." It concedes that a serious problem faces Glendale. It states as follows: Currently, it costs more to operate the units at Grayson than to import power. That means the Grayson gas-fired power plant has become obsolete during this time of breathtaking increases in the availability of electric power from solar, wind, hydroelectric, and other sources of renewable energy. Also, we find in the document that the two proposed additional facilities at the landfill, the anaerobic digester and the small power plant, they are not discussed separately as in the past. The two proposals are combined into one and are identified as a biogas renewable generation power plant. The primary goal at the landfill now appears to be generation of electric power, not waste disposal.
Mr. Rankin, if you wrap it up, I would appreciate it.
We need the city to clarify what it is trying to do at Shoal Canyon landfill. At a minimum, the city should order the preparation of an environmental impact report on the biogas renewable generation power plant.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Next speaker is Alice Dworkin, followed by David Choi, followed by Audrey Zarukian.
We now know that installing an anaerobic digester is being considered as part of the expansion program for the Shoal Canyon landfill. Years ago, we were promised a small dump, one that would be closed in a specific delineated amount of time. This promise has been broken. Now this dump has grown into one of the largest county landfills. The environmental impact report for the expansion of the Shoal Canyon landfill states that the purpose for expanding the landfill is to provide waste diversion programs. And we now know that that includes installing an anaerobic digester. It is fair to assume that if that happens, expansion will definitely follow. Most of the city council members have expressed either reluctance or opposition to this expansion due to the resultant significant adverse impacts which cannot be mitigated. Don't fool yourself into thinking that a small digester may not grow into a sizable one with a sizable footprint. Again, we look at your broken promises. Among the well-documented impacts for anaerobic digesters delineated by the Cal Recycle environmental impact report are odor, noise, lighting, air pollution, and aesthetics. A group of local citizens toured the anaerobic digester in Carson, which is operated by the LA County Sanitation Department. It is appropriately located in an industrial area and not in an area surrounded by R1 properties. As homes began to crop up close to the Carson facility, buffer zones were purchased. Also, an advisory council of representatives from surrounding homeowners associations was established. One of the problems associated with the anaerobic digester in Carson is odor. Although the system of digesters in Carson is different, it is important to note that odor is still being reported from neighbors, even as the county has spent $70 million a year for odor control. Odor can extend to a two-mile radius. A two-mile radius around Shoal Canyon would include Olive Shoal Canyon, Chevy Chase Canyon, Eagle Rock, the Linda Vista area of Pasadena, and beyond the Rose Bowl. The Pasadena City Planning Department has already submitted a laundry list of concerns. Further, are you ready to sacrifice our property values? And are you ready to accept the resultant loss in your tax base? In closing, I am asking the city council to set a firm date for the closing of the landfill, find another location for the digester, provide a promise environmental impact report for the Shoal Power Plant, and establish an advisory council for the landfill areas comprised of homeowners association from the affected areas. With all due respect, I ask you elected officials and civil servants, public servants, I want you to remember who you represent and who you work for.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is David Choi.
Dear Mayor and the honorary members of the city council, it's an honor and pleasure, first time speaking, addressing a city council. My name is David Choi. I'm 50 years old. Been a homeowner in Glendale for more than 17 years. I'm a tenured professor at Loyola Marymount University. I started my career being an environmental consultant to the U.S. EPA and the Electric Power Research Institute. Have been an entrepreneur in the energy industry, ranging from oil drilling, bad for the environment, gas conversion, which we're doing, and lithium ion batteries. A few weeks ago, I got to speak with Mr. Choa after a city council meeting. What I learned was surprising and revealing. I initially approached Mr. Choa to understand why he liked anaerobic digestion. It brings extra food waste, creates harmful gases, just to create compressed gas, which is also still bad. But soon the conversation turned to Mr. Choa telling me that if I didn't like his plans for anaerobic digestion, I should not have moved to Glen Oaks Canyon. He said, "If you don't like the landfill, why did you move there?" My neighbors are now getting the impression that Mr. Choa and maybe others in the city government have the perspective that since we chose to move there, we have no right to question the city's plans for the landfill. I'd like to take this opportunity to express to Mr. Choa, the city officials, and the council whether problems lie in that perspective. First, as people said here, the landfill was supposed to be closed. 959 GPA called for turning the landfill into a recreational area within 18 years. That's what my long-term, longtime neighbors, like Jerry, refer to as the promise. The landfill went up with a promise to the residents that it would be closed. Okay? We're putting up thousand tons of trash every single day. I have a Prius, that's like 1,000 Priuses per day on that small mountain. Right now, you have 3 million Priuses on that mountain. Think about that for a second. Second, there certainly was no plan for expansion when any of us moved there. That's something that the city came up with a few years ago with no input from any residents. Cannot blame the residents for being unhappy about that plan. Third, there was no plan for anaerobic digestion when any of us moved there. You cannot blame the residents for being unhappy about bringing extra food waste to a residential area. Fourth, again, there was no onsite power generation when any of us moved there. Okay? So you cannot blame the residents for being unhappy, not knowing what polluting turbines you're going to be putting up there. For these reasons, the city can't just shove its plans down our throats. Let me also add this. It is very obvious the city would like to add or do many things at Shoal: generate biogas, build AD, and expand the dump. You want to turn Shoal into a revenue source. Right now, the city is planning to install power plants at Shoal that last way beyond the current life and size of the landfill. The city wrote on its RFP for power plants that I have with me on page 12, that is preparing to extend the life of the landfill for another 22 to 32 years. The city is setting up power plants now, already, assuming a landfill expansion without it ever being approved by you. Okay? Council, please think about that for a second. Rather than being transparent, as Jerry mentioned, the city officials choose to strategize against the residents and try to sneak one plan after another through the council. My neighbors, as you can tell, are very polite, but we're not stupid. In conclusion, my neighbors and I demand the following, as other people have mentioned: a closure date, 2028, that's 10 years from now. I think we're being very, very reasonable. Okay? Like many modern cities, set up an advisory council to deal with power and environment consisting of residents and city officials, so that we can work together. No anaerobic digester in a residential area, please. And for any projects, an EIR report, EIR, as other people have asked for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Choi. Next speaker is Audrey Zarukian, followed by Claudia.
Hi. I'm Audrey Zarukian, as many of you know, president of CFL-A Coalition for Landfill Alternatives. And as our name implies, we are for landfill alternatives. And we think that an anaerobic digester or a biogas renewable generator may possibly be a good idea, but locating it in a residential area is not a good idea. Here's a map of Glendale from the state of California's website showing the very high fire hazard zones. A good portion of Glendale, as you can see, including Glendale's dump, is within the very high fire hazard zones. Do you know what happens to your homeowner's insurance policy when you buy a home in one of those areas? I can tell you what happens, which is what has been happening for the last few years. It gets canceled right away. Nobody is willing to insure you or your home in a high fire hazard zone. So you're left scrambling to find a homeowner's insurance policy that will cover you in this area. And when you do, it's very, very pricey. And now, the city wants to add an anaerobic, an experimental anaerobic digestion facility, one that's highly combustible, and power generators up at Glendale's dump site. The byproduct of an anaerobic digester, let's call it AD for short, is usually more than 50% methane. Do we really want to get into the solid business of methane in the very high fire hazard zone? I brought with me just a few of many articles on AD biogas hazards. Can you go to the next slide, please? Here's an article co-authored by an environmental engineer who works for the USDA. He states that biogas hazards include fire and explosion and writes, "Because of the explosion hazard, no open flames should ever be used near a digester. No smoking near the digester, biogas lines, and equipment." No open flames? Council members, mayor, city attorney, can you guarantee that there will be no open flames near this AD up at Glendale's dump? A dump that sits on known earthquake lines, faults, and is in a very high fire hazard zone? Are you willing to risk our lives, our homes, our communities, and our precious jewel city? Is such a big risk worth whatever financial gain may come from this proposed project? I certainly hope not. I can't believe that our mayor and our city council members would take that risk. I know all five of you to be good people with integrity. You're wise, intelligent, and hard-working representatives of our city, who ultimately seem to have the best interest of our jewel city at heart. We don't want our city to be involved in the solid business of methane, not near residential areas. Take this business to an industrial area. In fact, historically, ADs have always been located in industrial areas, on farms far away from residential areas. Based on our research, correct me if I'm wrong, the AD facility that's proposed to be located at this dump site would be the first of its kind in a residential area. Here's an article from December 2016, if you don't mind scrolling down just a little bit more. It reads, the article says, okay, it's about an anaerobic digester in the UK. It says, "Toxic spills..." It says, "Toxic spills from ADs are common and fast increasing. According to the Environmental Agency, ADs caused 12 serious pollution incidences in 2015, a rise of more than 50% on the previous year." ADs don't just leak, they sometimes explode. "In 2014, an AD blast at Harper Adams University in the UK destroyed a huge containment tank and the building housing, yet showering the surrounding land with tons of toxic slurry." And another article, if you don't mind scrolling down again, another article, this time written by a company that manufactures parts for anaerobic digesters. They write, "The chances of an anaerobic digester exploding are slim to none, but that's exactly what happened at a farm in Oregon. 'I don't think you could ever make it happen again,' says the CEO of the company that owns and operates the digester. 'We know what component failed, but we just don't know exactly what the ignition source was,' they write." Mayor, council members, all this is proof that these units can and do fail, and when they do, they can be extremely dangerous. We ask you to please consider a different location for the anaerobic digester and the power plant, an industrial area far removed from residential areas. We don't want Glendale to become the next Porter Ranch. And I'm sure none of you want to go down in history as being the council members who voted to put Glendale in the very risky and dangerous business of methane. Please, dump the dump by 2028. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Claudia, and I'm not going to even try to pronounce your last name because I can't read your, Andrew, please tell us what your last name is.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My last name is Claudia, well, my last name is Puig. There's a baseball player with the same last name, if you're a Dodger fan.
P-U-I-G?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, Yassiel. So my name is Claudia Puig, and I'm a longtime Glendale resident, and I'm a veteran journalist. Like every homeowner in this room, as well as the ones who are not here, I'm concerned with property values. It's a universal concern, I'm sure everybody here is concerned with it. As we all know, landfills can negatively impact the value of neighboring properties. Everyone who owns a house near a landfill is a person who has worked hard to own a piece of property and to pay his or her mortgage. An expansion of this landfill would have serious effects for all of us hardworking Glendale residents. High-volume landfills like Shoal are ones that equal or exceed 500 tons of waste a day. From the data we have, Shoal's current volume is about 745 tons a day. According to an article in the Wall Street Journal, "High-volume landfills diminish adjacent property values by an average of 13.7%." In other words, the value of our homes drops by almost 14% simply because we're situated near the Shoal Canyon landfill. What this study definitively cautioned homeowners was this: If you must live near a dump, make sure it's a small one. Not only Shoal Canyon not a small dump, but you, the city officials, we have entrusted to be looking out for us Glendale citizens expressly want to, not necessarily you, but the city of Glendale wants to expand what is already a high-volume landfill. We, who are most impacted by the dump, have essentially no say in the matter. We have no input, but we will be the ones who are most affected. On a personal note, I moved to Glen Oaks Canyon in 1997. I've raised two daughters in our wonderful neighborhood. It's been a nearly idyllic place for them to grow up in, an area filled with friendly and diverse folks and beautiful flora and fauna. A deer regularly came to graze on the hill in our backyard. One of my neighbors and I named it, and our whole family would stand watching it transfixed. We often hear coyotes howling at night, a sound that makes me feel that I could be living on Little House on the Prairie. All this is pretty darn great when you're living in LA County within the, not far from the intersection of four freeways. My daughters are grown, having gone to college and moved out. My husband and I are still here. We love this neighborhood, and preserving its special qualities and value means the world to us. The value of home prices affects everyone in Glendale, not just those of us in the canyon. Others here are addressing these crucial environmental concerns, like odors and water issues, noise, fault line concerns, but just looking through a purely economic lens, the landfill staying open, and worse, expanding, hurts all of us. We all, everybody here in this room loves Glendale. We're asking you to work with us and make the wise, sensible, and economically reasonable decision to close the landfill. Close by 2028, before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robin Lewis, followed by Margarita Drew.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm not going to reiterate, a lot of territory has already been covered, so I'm going to simply take an excerpt from a longer letter, which I'll leave from you, with you, later. "We understand that there are challenges and costs to contend with taking the truly consumable and courageous path to protecting the health of residents in three cities. The landfill project proposal will further deteriorate the remaining natural beauty of the surrounding area, severely degrade the quality of life for hundreds of families, risk their health, especially of those already compromised by respiratory conditions, adversely affect property values, and potentially lead to catastrophic consequences should a major earthquake hit, which seismologists continue to predict is soon approaching with every passing year. The most distressing and egregious actions taken by the city is the relatively recent cyclical extensions of landfill operations by automatic five-year renewal. We implore you to reconsider this ambitious and invasive project for the Shoal Canyon landfill. Glendale should follow suit with neighboring Tionne in Griffith Park and Puente Hills. Please, honor the city's original pledge to the residents living close to this facility, made in good faith and which has long been overdue. A revision of the joint powers agreement scheduled for this October should rightfully include landfill closure by June 2028." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Margarita Drew.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm a working mom and have a Cub Scout that meets on Tuesday night, so I apologize for not having been able to be here more often. In fact, my son had a Cub Scout meeting tonight, and they're working on their time capsules for 2017, and I'm really hoping that this will be the year that he can put a news article in his time capsule that says, "This Glendale City Council has committed to close the Shoal Canyon landfill permanently." It would be great, especially considering that one of the Scouts' mottos is, "Leave no trace." But what I want to address for you, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a journalist, I'm not a geologist, I'm a teacher, actually, and I just want to address the question that I think the common folk wonder, if we close the landfill, where does the trash go? What are we going to do? And we're obviously asking you to close it and not repurpose it for waste management, for energy production. Well, it seems to me that there are options for us. So first of all, LA County currently has a large tract of land in the Mesquite Valley that they use for a landfill. They claim that this can hold the trash for the entire LA County for 100 years. So why aren't we using this? I understand, some people would argue that the train transfer point is in Puente Hills, which is 20 miles away, and they would argue that the expense and the pollution of our trucks carting our trash that far away would be unsupportable. However, we're proposing that you close the dump in 2018. In 10 years, all of those trucks are going to be electric vehicles. Heck, they may even be self-driving. So not only are we getting rid of pollution, but we're cutting out the cost of one paid city employee. We should not assume that by doing the right thing, by closing down the landfill, that our costs are going to grow astronomically, or that we're going to harm our environment in some other way. There are several common sense things that I feel the council can do. Number one, implement a zero-waste policy and enforce it. This will cut down on the amount of trash that Glendale produces in the first place, which will lower our costs in transporting trash somewhere else. Pasadena is already doing this. Restaurants are not allowed to use Styrofoam containers, and people are still dining in Pasadena. Pasadena still has small businesses opening up. It's more popular than Glendale, quite frankly. And I think, I've also read, I'm sorry, that there are companies in various industries that are trying to adhere to a model where almost everything is reused or reusable at their sites. There's no excuse for us. We can do this, and we can find businesses that don't adhere to the policy. Second thought, monetary incentives and fines, well, monetary incentives for those who recycle, and fines for people who don't, right? I think that residents would be open to this, just as we were open to the incentives for our lawn replacements a few years ago, right? And if businesses don't like it, they'll be fined. And we know businesses like money, so I think they will change to hold on to their cash. Third, we can implement small increases in our trash fees every month for residents and businesses, and we can start that now, so that by 2018, we have a bit of a coffer to help pay for any unexpected costs of moving our trash to the Mesquite Valley site. And finally, we need to stay abreast of new technologies that are non-polluting, not just those that do pollute. Across the US, cities are increasingly using solar and wind power. In Georgetown, Texas, of all places, it is predominantly powered by green energy, and the mayor, Dale Ross, has gone on record as saying that this green energy cost his residents less than traditional energy sources. Now, tell me, are we really going to let Texas out-green us? That's outrageous to me. We're Californians, and this is our movement, right? I understand, it'll take strong leadership, and it may take sacrifice on each of your parts to stand by your residents and work for our welfare, instead of giving in to political pressure or looking for business profits. But I guarantee you all that if you do this, when my son and his fellow Scouts open their time capsules in 10 years, they will be proud of the place they grew up in, as all of us will. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is, has the most, Case Salter? Am I correct, or? You need to call 911, I'm butchering all the last names today.
Yeah, no, I'm Ken Salter. I've been a homeowner in Glen Oaks Canyon since 1994. I'll just take a minute or so of your time. And I just want to leave you with this question. Well, first, a first statement, it's my understanding that a significant portion of the capacity of the landfill is utilized by people outside of the city. In other words, we're a net importer of trash. Why is the Jewel City a net importer of other people's trash? Why are we prostituting our natural resources and our hillsides to take in others, to take in the trash of our neighbors? It just doesn't make sense. Is that what we want the Jewel City to be known for? Does that, would you do that? This just isn't a business that we should be engaged in, accepting other people's trash. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card. We usually don't respond to the speakers, but Mr. City Manager, are you, do you have anything to?
Just very briefly, and I'm sure the city attorney will interject if it goes too far, because I, it's a little bit unfortunate. I admire the emotion that you hear from a lot of folks. Do bristle a little bit at some of the mischaracterization in the example of Mr. Choi's comment, because I think ultimately that's designed to poison the well against the intentions of not just the council perhaps, but certainly the staff. One of the speakers, last time the group was here, had indicated that they can see the landfill from all these different vantage points, and Mr. Choi had indicated that he couldn't see it. And my comment to him was, well, I thought, they just said that you could in fact see it. He got very upset at that point, and the discussion kind of broke down from there. The point being that, I listened very politely to you, sir. I think that the point is that closing the landfill, whether it's tomorrow in 2018 or 2028, is actually very easy. Doesn't require a lick of courage, because whoever is going to be on the side of sustaining an integrated waste facility, a dump, to use the term, that's the easy thing to do. We talk a lot, a lot. Some of the folks in this room, who I've spoken to up at the Joe Bridges Clubhouse, have wanted to debate this issue of sustainability. And what is sustainability, and what does it mean, and is it really an important value for this organization, for this council? The problem is that sustainability, especially on the front end of various technologies that are available, is extraordinarily difficult to muster the political will to do, can be scary, because it represents change, can be expensive, because you're at the front end of the technology. Two things I would tell you in response to some of the questions. One, certainly don't blame residents for expressing their angst, and even their animosity, honestly. At the end of the day, I'm a resident, just like all these folks, and just like all of you. And so to the extent that folks are anxious about what could be in the future, I share that, because we're all in this together. Secondly, this notion of shoving plans down anyone's throat is, I would hope and expect as veteran policymakers, you would agree, a little bit misplaced, particularly in the state of California, where the Environmental Quality Act dictates that, basically, you can't hide anything from anybody, nor would you would want to in the context of good public policy. So we would look at the factors, be they water, or noise, or odor, or anything else, in the context of a CEQA review. We had moved forward for quite a few years, probably on the better side of a decade, with this discussion about the long-term expansion of the landfill. And why? Because you're always going to have, you're always going to have some degree of residual, no matter what you do. If we go to a zero-waste policy, there will still be something left over. Our good friends in Pasadena, the last speaker's question as to importing trash, half of the trash comes from Pasadena with their zero-waste policy intact. The idea that there will be something left over is important, and then that question becomes, okay, well, if you have a facility that is here, that you can put into that facility and do so in a way that really is playing within the parameters by way of the disposal capacity, is that not necessarily the best way to address this issue of sustainability? Versus taking it to Puente Hills, which was the largest landfill in the country until it closed, and then taking it out to Mesquite, not only the environmental footprint, the carbon footprint of that, but also the cost impact of that. When you look at the, and that project, that CEQA process, because of the volume of comments that we got, was held back. It had taken us so long to sift through all of the comments that we got, the law had changed by way of greenhouse gas emissions and measuring that. So it has to be refreshed. So no step has been taken, because indeed, you can't hide anything within that process. So no one's missed any meetings in that respect. With the respect to the 12 to 14 megawatts generation project that you're aware of, that environmental will be coming back to you. And thereto, you consider that today, and probably for the next generation, methane will be produced and flared off at that location for past sins, if you will. Certainly for all of the activity of that landfill, the methane that comes off it is being flared out in that area, which I would argue isn't a residential area on the landfill site. In fact, the landfill is, has its own zoning, but it is adjacent, I'll grant that. But the idea being that you flare it off today, and it is going to generate electricity for some, or generate methane, which can be used to generate electricity, the very definition of renewable bioenergy. Is that easy, based on the comments you heard today? No, it isn't. But all of those impacts will be borne out earnestly through an EIR or a CEQA process when the time comes. Finally, with the anaerobic digester, it's interesting that we talk a great deal about technology and conversion technologies at that. But today, as we sit here, and as I've been dealing with integrated waste my entire career, if you can believe that, I started as an intern, ended up working in integrated waste. People were talking about superheated plasma and pyrolysis and all this other stuff back then, in the aftermath of AB 939, because the goal was to eliminate the crisis, the landfill crisis, not enough landfills, too much trash, too many people. Today, still, anaerobic digestion is the only conversion technology that exists. Now, there are all kinds of anaerobic digesters, and I was very pleased to hear folks acknowledge that. If this were going to be the kind of anaerobic digester that you'd see off the 15 freeway or up in the Central Valley, by all means, we would, we would have, share those concerns, because you would have all that odor that comes off of that. That is necessarily what we're talking about. And to the extent, and in fairness and respect to the folks that I got up to speak, to say, well, we don't know what it well, we don't know what it is. I do wholly, wholeheartedly apologize. That process has been slow-going. We will have to do an environmental review pursuant to CEQA to present to you, to inventory all of the issues, all of the potential impacts, be they improbable, or completely possible, or very likely, to inventory all of that, to get all of the comment, and to present to you, the city council, for you to make that determination on the CEQA, and then ultimately whether or not to move forward with the project. All of that has to come forward. Now, I appreciate that what you've seen here tonight, what you've seen in previous meetings, is a function of letting you know, way on the front end, city council, this is what we, the folks in Glen Oaks Canyon, value and believe, and what our position is. I totally appreciate that. But to the extent that I know individually from all four of you, and certainly Mr. Sananian is in the same boat, he's expressed the same concern, I want to be very clear about what all these impacts are before I even think about deciding whether or not to do some of these actions. And to that end, you are keeping that open mind. I would also hope that folks in the audience keep an open mind, because it's one thing to say that we should have an advisory body, but that we're telling you no. That right off the bat, before there's any CEQA done, and recognizing that, you know, I'm a layperson, or I'm this, or I'm that, but I am not necessarily an electrical engineer, or I'm not an environmental scientist, but the answer is no. I mean, as we've talked about all the time, where you stand depends on where you sit. I appreciate that. I respect that, as do all of you. But I think at the end of the day, when we talk about this big word, sustainability, and is it truly something that has value, and do we mean something by it? Well, to that end, I think we have to wait and see. Truly, because it's become a loaded phrase, let's see what the science says. Let's do the environmental review and approach it with a long-term systemic, city-wide, region-wide look at what the value is to us as a community. And if we can do that, and the council ultimately decides either you won't approve or certify the environmental review, or you won't approve the project, as staff, we've done our job, both by you and the community. But at this point, based on what we know, based on the system that we have, the region and nation and world that we have, knowing how it's done in other places around that world, I think we can at least have that discussion. I would hope that we could at least have the discussion. And I'm very happy, again, and I respect the fact that so many folks here are willing to be cordial and professional and polite, and I hope that they'll find that reciprocated as we go forward. There was a lot that was said, a lot of it had value, but I promise you, city council, and it's, I wouldn't even, it's not a promise, it's a guarantee, that we will satisfy the requirements of CEQA, and in doing so, nobody gets blamed, and nobody gets anything shoved down their throat, because that's just not the rules that we operate by.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments? No?
I just wanted to thank everybody for being here and for your attempt at educating all of us, and we appreciate it. And I think you noticed, a lot of us were taking notes, and just know that we're listening. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Under Action Items, Act 8A, as Director of Public Works regarding Contractual Tree Maintenance Program, 8A1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a contract amendment with West Coast Arborist Inc., contract number C-105967, and to increase the contract amount by $319,500 over the remaining three years of the contract term for a total not to exceed contract amount of $5,637,000.
I think we just lost our quorum.
Qualifies as two and a half council members.
That's not a quorum.
We round up.
There's a problem with the light there. Lights were not on. I did not want our fourth council member to fall and become injured, so I made sure that she had safe passage to her relief station.
Thank you, Mr. Najari. Mr. Woschel.
I'll bring up Mr. Hargrove to give you the overview on this requested amendment to our existing contract for some work that we're doing that was not originally part of the contract that was bid. Dan?
Good evening, Mayor Garbati, and members of council, Dan Hargrove, Deputy Director of Public Works. And we're here to look at an amendment to the contractual tree maintenance program. And myself and Mr. Penosean, the Parks Department, will be sharing some time covering the areas that are pertinent to our different divisions, or departments. Firstly, just a real quick background on our contract, a street maintenance contract. We've had a tree maintenance contract since 1999. The scope of work has expanded as such, and we've refined that to be augmentation with our own in-house forestry crew, a smaller crew. The scope of work includes several layers of trimming, which is the lion's share of the contract, including annual palm trimming, a six-year cycle for all of our non-palm broadleaf trees throughout the city. We trim trees on a six-year cycle, which is an optimum for the industry. The remaining portion of the contract is necessary removals. Of course, we only remove dead, dying, or structurally unsound trees that we can't remedy through other means. And the final portion is our reforestation or planting program, which we consolidate annually and starting in fall, with the priority being to fulfill resident requests for new street trees. We entered into a new contract in September 2015. Some of the features of this contract were, it was an RFP process, first of all. We had two bidders that made it to the final review, and the successful contractor was West Coast Arborists Incorporated. Some of the features of the contract included a new costing structure based on, for service requests and trimming for the size of the tree. And for us, it included an update of our tree, street tree inventory. All of our city street trees are in a inventory database, but this time, it was, it's always good to update the inventory as it is, to keep it fresh and accurate. But in this case, we also included it as a GPS inventory, so all of our trees have a GPS signature now, and as well as our work history, conditions, size, and other information. The other part of the contract that was new is we included with this a joint park maintenance contract, which included inventory of all of the city park trees, as well as an initial care program that Mr. Penosean may cover a little bit later. Key for the public works side of the equation has been really what we've been seeing with the impacts of the drought. Now, of course, we had a really good rainy season this past year, but after years and years of having drought, the trees have either outright died, because they are just really not suited for the Southern California climate suns having, you know, the type of irrigation that we had prior to the drought, as well as when trees are deprived water, they reach a point of stress where they're susceptible to pest and disease invasion. This has really been the secondary impact that's been most concerning for us. Mr. Penosean will cover one of the most significant pests, which is the polyphagous shot-hole boar, but there are other pests that have been affecting our city trees as well. Ipsed beetle in pines, our red turpentine beetle, all of which have proved fatal in a lot of respects. And just to kind of go over the graphic there, first I'll point out the anomaly, which you could see fiscal year 11, 12, a little spike in removals. That was due to the windstorm, the significant windstorm the region faced back then. And then the following years, the spike in planting, you could see, is actually based upon our receiving the grant, that was 350 trees that we lost in the windstorm, from Proposition A, LA County Proposition A, that helped us replace the trees that we lost. So other than that anomaly, you could see a trend of the removals going up. The last two years have been significant, it's been a significant factor. We've had to remove 850 trees the past two years. We're averaging removing about 690 over the course of that last decade. On the other end of it, our planting program has not been able to keep pace with the removals. So we usually average around 375 trees that we plant each fiscal year. So one of the key factors for us in terms of seeking this amendment is to bolster our ability to remove the trees we have to remove, and as important, more importantly, trying to get, catching up with our reforestation program, and having a little boost of resources to support tree planting.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Mr. Najari? Yes. This is, every year, more trees has been removed, and we didn't, you know, plant it instead, right?
Yes.
More, except this is 2013, 12, 13, and 2013, 14. Why was then, we were planting more trees and removing less?
The result of those blue spikes in planting was our ability to successfully get a competitive grant through LA County Proposition A, which replaced all of the trees that we lost during the windstorm the prior year. There's also some other smaller projects that contributed to that, our Elm Street reforestation program, and a portion of our Brand reforestation program as well. So that's why you're seeing that spike, that anomaly in the replacement.
So after that, we are planting less because we don't have budget? Is that, we have this?
Councilman Algaianian, yes, that is exactly the case. We just do not have the resources with balancing it with all of our other needs, trimming, necessary removals, to keep pace with the amount of removals that we've been seeing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's continue, please.
The other portion of, it's a part of the public works, part of the amendment, is the Brand Boulevard demonstration project. This one should be familiar to the council. We've talked a lot about the Brand Boulevard trees for a long time. Originally, Brand Boulevard was, we had 205 carrot woods along the street, up to 2010, when the reforestation program was approved. You could see on the left side with the blue border, that's what a carrot wood looks in its natural form, and unfortunately, on the right side is Brand Boulevard and what carrot woods have looked like, and continue to look like in their present form on Brand. With this in mind, with this decline on a wide-scale case, we look to introduce a multi-year reforestation program based upon the individual condition of the trees and watching the gradual impact on Brand Boulevard. In other words, it's an eight-to-10-year program. We looked at every single carrot wood along Brand, evaluated the tree, my arborist staff, and set up conditions. Based upon those conditions, we set a plan in motion for removing the trees in the worst condition first and replacing them. We felt that it was really important to retain a canopy along Brand, and so by rather than deforesting and removing all the trees, some of which really are in fair condition, to make it more of a paced removal and replacement, thereby diversifying the age of the trees that we're planting, as well as the species, and not completely deforesting the street.
I have two questions.
Mr. Najari asks first, then Mr. Woschel.
So I've been waiting for about 15 years for those carrot woods to finally grow. The problem is, they have been trimmed so severely and deeply to accommodate the storefront owner's desire for their logos, signed names, et cetera, to be seen from the street, that those trees didn't have a chance. I mean, let me tell it to you. I mean, I know that, I'm on that street every day, five days a week for the past 15 years, and it just ticks me off. Finally, you'd get a nice canopy going, the next week, it'd be like, oh my God. It's, you know, like the Charlie Brown Christmas tree after that. So I'm not sure if that was us doing the trimming, or whether that was the Downtown Glendale Association doing that. I know they have some maintenance issues, but we never gave those trees a chance, and none of these other trees that we plant there are going to have a chance either if we do the same sort of trimming and thinning that we've done on those carrot woods.
But I think you'll find that, because the point's very well taken, the, perhaps the wrong tree in a downtown business environment. And so I think the other specimens that we would like to introduce as part of this demonstration project would help accomplish that very goal, so that we aren't at cross purposes in fostering businesses, advertising with their signage on their storefronts, and then we have to go trim. And you're never going to make everyone happy with that species of tree. Same thing that you would see with like ficus trees. They get so thick and so heavy, so low, that it's bad for a business district. So I think you'll be happy with what you see going forward.
Yeah.
And now the ones you've replaced, they're about five feet tall, and it's like, it's going to take another 15 years for them to get to any significant shade-bearing size, and it's very frustrating, especially when we're trying to make mid-brand more pedestrian-friendly, consumer-friendly. I mean, ripping out those trees and putting in the little dinky things are not helping our cause.
Mr. Woschel?
Well, that leads me to two questions, because I wanted to know why, what happened to those trees? And now I, now here, why and what happened to them? You're going to take them out, or can you transplant those? Can you put those in someplace where there are no trees, like in the, you know, up in the Rossmoyn area, where they're asking for trees on the streets? You can't transplant them, you have to destroy them all?
Yeah, Councilmember Devine, absolutely. The trees are so established into that ground, they are far beyond any form of feasible transplanting. Yeah, we have to remove the trees, unfortunately. And speaking to Councilmember Devine and Councilwoman Najari in question, absolutely, and kind of accenting what the city manager said, the carrot wood tree was a tree planted in the 60s and 70s. It was a foolproof, bulletproof tree. The problem with it was, well, first of all, arboriculture, urban forestry wasn't as advanced as it is today, and it is the wrong tree for the location. They canopy out at exactly the height of the storefrontages.
And they were messy, too. They dropped those old orange seeds.
So there was a design, a landscape design that was thought to be a very nice one, but when you look at the long term, what's going to happen with those trees, it was kind of a fait accompli in terms of what happened. So one of the things that we try to do in urban forestry, community forestry now, is ensure, and there's a key word, right tree, right place, and that kind of leads us to the next phase of this, which is we select trees that are suitable for whatever location they're at, including drought tolerance, trying to select trees that grow faster in their youth, trying to select trees, in the case of Brand, where you have those lower storefrontages that are more, can be more upright growth to begin with, and then they can flourish above the signage. So those were all factors that we considered when we set aside the pallet. Relative to the size of tree planted, 24-inch box is really the optimum size for getting a tree established. You have to think in terms of being able to plant a tree with two times the planting hole. Of course, we have confined space with the tree wells there, so the 24-inch box is what we plant, is a little bit smaller than we would like to see, but it will adapt quicker than a larger size, and we won't be damaging the root system to plant the tree.
Councilmember Devine has a question.
I'm just dying to, I was going to ask you, can't we buy trees that are older, more mature trees, so that when we plant them, they have some sort of a canopy already, that we don't have to wait 10 years? And number two, I want to bring up the fact that on the build on Lexington, one of the conditions that I asked for, because they wanted to know what size trees we wanted, I said to plant the trees before they put the concrete in. And now you're doubling down on that one, that that is what has to happen, that they should not wait until the concrete's in, and the little area is there, and then try to plant a tree that's in a 24-foot or inch?
24-inch box.
Box, yeah.
Yeah, but mature trees are in larger boxes.
That's why you have to plant them before the concrete goes in.
There's no concrete going in.
No, not here. Now, that's the position that we're in here, that we can't go any bigger, not any more mature, because we're dealing with a smaller space. Lexington, where they're building this new development, they're at a place now where they could be putting those trees in, so please, Mr. Ochoa, take that message back to that development. So we get mature trees on Central Lexington, all around that block. Amen. Sorry.
No, we will endeavor to do that, because I understood that direction very clearly. The question will be, and I'll have to defer to Dan as arborist, if you get a tree that is too mature, and then have to cut its roots to put it into the ground as a bigger tree, it could end up not surviving the transplant. So there's a sweet spot somewhere in there.
Right, that's right. But that's too bad that we're too late here.
Okay, let's finish the presentation, and I'll ask my question.
Okay. So again, and speaking to Councilmember Devine's comment, I couldn't have said it any better. That was exactly, there was no comment I could make. That's exactly the situation that we're in, we have a confined existing space there. But keeping in mind what the gross space conditions are... But keeping in mind what the, what the, what the gross space conditions are, we had, we had, we have a long-term, of course, project for, for Brann, and working with the Downtown Glendale Association, they desired to see a little bit more progress on that, and had, we, after some discussions with them, they had proposed to us, well, how about we do a demonstration project along the 200-block of Brann, which is Wilson to California, where we're about 50% done with the carrot wood reforestation process there? Why don't we fast-forward that and, and plant, replace, remove and replace all those trees? This is part of the plan, and the trees, none of the trees are in what I would consider good condition along this, so it was very desirable actually to do this demonstration project, and in the addition, including additional tree species, just to mix up the, the, the species aesthetics, and also the diversity, which is, which is key for us, is being able to, as where back in the day, carrot woods were planted all the same age, all at the same time, they grow up, they get trimmed, and they die, all at the same time. We now diversify our species as much as we can, so we don't have the vulnerability that we would to a monoculture. So with that in mind, for this block, we have selected, and we've already started the process, with the three, with, with two species, which is the Chinese tallow to the far left, and the London plane, which we're mixing up in a landscape pallet, and in discussions with the DGA, we found an agreeable third tree option, which is the golden rain tree, which is the one on the far right, as well as the Guadalupe palms, which are, is out on, in front of the Alex Theater, which is another, the fourth species technically for that block. So the desire with this portion of the project is, is to amend the contract to support this demonstration project, which we have the, the resources to, to do with, with the, if the amendment is approved. So those are the street challenges and projects, and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Penosi to discuss the parks.
Good evening, Mayor Carpetti, and members of council. For parks, we are requesting to add the transportation center. I know transportation center is under CDD, but for the past few years, we've been asking Parkwood, who's our landscape contractor, to do tree maintenance at the transportation center. In discussion with staff at CDD, we felt it's most efficient to incorporate the eight palm trees that they have on an annual cycle under this program that we have with WCA, hence, we're adding transportation center into the contract with this amendment request. As far as the park tree maintenance program goes, we have been conducting the tree service on an as-needed basis. A tree seems to be in decline, we remove it, the tree needs pruning, we take care of it, and then for replacement, we rely on our ARBD program, as well as some of the funds we have set aside for tree planting. We also have a challenge of trees in the open space. This past couple of years, we've had to remove about 100 trees within the open space. Some of these are within parks, for example, within the Seven Trees Trail in Brann Park, a lot of those trees that do not get the natural irrigation we have in the parks seem to be in very much of a decline and pose a hazard. Whenever we have that near trails and open spaces, and at times, behind residences where they are budding the open space, and those trees are city trees, and they pose danger to the property or whatnot, we have been stepping in and taking care of it, because open space falls within the parks. We are looking at, for the future, expanding our tree maintenance funds, to be able to address more trees, and eventually look at evaluating the needs to be in a frequency, in a cycle, similar to our colleagues at Public Works, to get onto a five-to-six-year grid cycle, and hopefully, we can get our grids to coincide with the grid maintenance that they do within Public Works in the streets, for more efficiency and better tracking of when the schedules are for the trees, all at the same time being able to maintain the need to do trees as, as requested or as needed within our facilities. Okay, this is okay. One of the challenges we have right now is the Pelophagus shot-hole borer. This is a pest. This is a pest that has been devastating to a lot of trees out in the Southern California. It is a very tiny beetle. It infects the tree, basically just bores a hole and goes inside, and after it leaves the hole, it, the causes the tree to be infected, it opens it up for wounds, and the tree eventually dies. The most susceptible genus is the platinus genus, which is, has the sycamore trees and London plains as two of the species that it has, and it's caused large-scale urban loss. In Orange County alone, they had to remove 1,279 sycamore trees due to this pest the past couple of years. So we're looking at taking preventive measures to address this issue within our park system, because what we have is, within the parks, we have quite a few sycamore trees, and here is the little pest that you see, it is smaller than a fingernail, and next to it, the slide, you see that little hole is what it would create, and you can see this coloring on the trunk, where they have made the hole. What it eventually result in is if it's infested, the picture on the left, you see, it looks like a shotgun that just shot right into it, and all the little pellet holes, I think hence the name shot-hole borer. And it, it has this coloring, and these trees are actually in our neighboring city of Burbank in their parks. So this shot-hole, this, this pest was very near to us. In April, we did an assessment, and through our colleagues, WCA, when they did assessment, we did not have this pest in our Glendale parks. We looked at Verdugo having the largest sycamore tree concentration, we did not have the pests at that time, and we came to council during the budget cycle, asked for funding, to be able to set this preventative measure in place. As of last week, there were signs of the pest at Verdugo Park, hence, we started last week doing the soil injections in the park. As far as the numbers, we have 634 sycamore trees.
Let him finish.
We, we have 634 sycamore trees in the parks, 130 London plain, and the treatment is going to be addressing all of those trees. We have 289 sycamores in Verdugo Park alone. And the cost of the treatment is based on DBH, which is diameter, breast height, and since we have an inventory of all of our trees, we're able to conclude that we have 14,134 inches of DBH on all of our trees that are going to be treated. And the soil injection, as I said, started last week, and the reason why I wanted to come here, talk to you about this process, is that this treatment method that we are putting in place is more like getting the flu shot. This has not been proven to be 100% preventative. It is what the researchers have been looking at, the UC researchers have tried this, and are recommending this measure be taken into place, to help preserve as best as we can. And part of the process, after the soil injection, the tree trunks have to be sprayed by a specific chemical also, to prevent the pest from trying to enter. So it's a dual process. The, the spraying of the trunks have to be repeated next six months after the first initial spraying, to help keep it, maintain it, and sustain it as best as we can, and the cost for treatment is $6 DBH, which is, for this project, what we have at hand is about $84,804 to be able to treat it for the first time around in one year. And we'll evaluate and look at, you know, more research as it comes up, and see what other treatment methods may be working better, or if this seems to do the job, we'll continue working with council and addressing it more on an annual basis to help preserve our, our sycamore trees in the, in the parks. The next slide talks about the funding requests, which are all within the report. The funds for each department and the account numbers are within the department's budgets, as allocated through the, the fiscal, budget fiscal year cycle, and we're only asking for these allocation amounts to be increased in the contract, so we can continue with the work at hand. That is the presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Algaian, then Councilmember Devine.
I, you have mentioned 634 sycamores, meaning parks. I don't see any oak tree. We don't have any oak tree in any other, any park?
Council, Mayor Carpetti and Councilwoman Algaian, we have a significant amount of oak trees within our parks. For this report, we only focused on the sycamore, because they are the most susceptible for this pest. Fortunately, do not have the information of how many oak trees we have within the parks, although our inventory does capture that, and we have it for future. If you'd like to know the number of oak trees we have, we can share that with you as well.
But the same pest is not affecting oak trees?
At, Councilmember Algaian, at this time, it seems that the most susceptible trees are the sycamores and London plains. Is it possible that this pest or other pests will be infecting the oak trees? There's a probability for that, but at this time, we're putting the focus on the trees that are most susceptible, for one reason, to be able to test the treatment, see if it's working, and also, because the cost could be prohibitive if we start doing all the trees within all of our parks.
Thank you. Mr. Devine?
Thank you. My question's for Mr. Hargrove. After hearing Coco's report, does it give you pause about the choosing the London plain for the Brann demonstration, since it is one of the most susceptible trees to this borer, insect?
Councilmember Devine, there is, there is, there is a chance, but the, the shot-hole borer is affecting a lot of trees. I, I think the sycamores, the California sycamores are the most, have, we've seen the most susceptibility in, in terms of a large population of trees that we have, a little less so with the London plains. We've been monitoring some of our mature London plains along the streets, and have not seen any activity within those. That's not to say that they, they are not susceptible, but it is, it is, it is much more prevalent with the California sycamore.
And within the context of demonstration project, I, I think we feel pretty good about that, as opposed to doing the entire street and making that commitment upfront. So I think we're, we would like to monitor where it is, because the other thing that London plain does is give you the changing of the seasons as well, which I think is, is something that speaks to the beauty of, of, you know, what we would find in downtown. So on, on this demonstration, yes, but your point's well taken. If we find that it's on the, the smorgasbord as much as the sycamores, then that probably means that we would not do anything else with it. It's unfortunate, because it is a nice tree.
Yeah, I thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
That's okay. Councilmember?
So I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think Glendale needs to maintain our trees, it's what gives us some character. My only question is about the ground treatment for the borer. How would we know if the ground treatment works? It's, like you said, it's getting a flu shot. If you don't get the flu, is it because you didn't get the flu bug, or the shot prevented the?
That is an exceptional question, Councilmember Najarian. We're going to continue to monitor those trees, with WCA at our side, and they're the ones doing the work currently at Verdugo Park. We will be relying on them and our tree experts within the parks to look at and see whether that the job was done. Now, the fact that the, we, we saw signs of it at Verdugo Park is kind of scary for us, that in order for that pest, if we don't treat it right now, we believe, just like, you know, Orange County and other agencies have felt, it's just going to increase itself, and we're going to lose a lot of sycamores. If we don't lose a lot of sycamores, I would comfortably say that the treatment is having an effect, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions. The, the existing trees, how far are they from the, from the, from the businesses that we, basically, as Councilmember Najarian indicated, the trees were growing fast, and then we trimmed them down so the businesses can be visible, that their signage would be, is that the reason? That trees were trimmed heavily?
Mayor Carpetti, and, yes, yes, it was. A good portion of it, we, we have, tried to maintain the trees as best we can within a cycle, but we are also wanted, we, we did, over the years, need to keep those trees trimmed to accommodate, lessen the fruit that, that drops, as well as to, to keep them confined to provide view sheds to the, the businesses. So it was certainly a contributing factor.
And the trees that you showed in your PowerPoint presentation, how old are these trees, the mature ones that you, was in the?
The photographs, Mayor Carpetti? Those are, are younger trees, the, the, I would say, I mean, it's hard to gauge the exact, exact age of the tree, but the, based upon those photographs, those can be anywhere from, I'm picturing them, 10 to maybe 15 years, maybe even less, eight to 15 years. The, the Chinese tallow will grow to a height of about 30, 35 feet tall, it'll be a narrower, more, more a columnar canopy is its natural form. The London plains can grow up to, probably won't reach the size that they can, which is, is 50 feet high, but they also grow in a more pyramidal fashion, that's manageable around the street signs. And then the golden rain is only about, at full maturity, is only about 30 feet tall, and has a spreading umbrella-shaped canopy, which is, what we're intending to do is manage those around the frontage of the sign, and then trim them, so it's more of a, a, a good shade tree.
I think, I think we need to be careful starting removing trees, because no matter what you do, the trees are going to block the, the businesses, no matter what you do, because it would take time to get to that 20-feet-tall height in order for us to trim it the way that you can see the, you have the eye level to see the sign, as well as having a canopy tree. But I, I think it's wrong to trim the trees so, so heavily, so they, they will die. It's just, it's just, I don't want to start removing all the trees, and this is a demonstration, basically, program that we have right now. They, we are going, we are going to remove 16 trees?
Mayor Carpetti, for the, for the, for the demonstration project, yeah, it's the 16 remaining carrot woods on the 200-block of?
And they are, they are, they are, they are mature trees, they're tall, but they are, they were trimmed down. Is that what it is?
Well, that, and they're not in the best of health anyway, so as we looked at the best location for our demonstration project, this probably is it. One, you have trees that are probably at the end of their life cycle for different reasons, and two, it's kind of a high-profile block in the area north of GGP and Americana. So it gives us a good chance to really try something different, in this case, this new pallet.
Okay, and the, the 24-inch boxes that come out, they're about six feet tall, eight feet tall?
Depending on the species.
Very narrow and small trees.
Yeah, they tend to be, they can usually plant it out, with those species, you can look eight to maybe as tall as 12 feet tall, plant it out. London plains specifically will be a little bit taller, but, but usually, they're about eight feet for, for the other two species to begin with. And, and of course, there is going to be that transition period as they grow, where it will infringe a little bit on, on the, the visibility, and, you know, we could, we could, we can mind, you know, the way that we maintain the trees, specifically because the form is different, that, that won't be such an impact on it, on their health.
I hope so, because no matter what you do, the trees are going to block the, the businesses at one, one time or another, because they need to grow to a point, as I, as I mentioned. What is the cost of these trees? The cost of the trees?
The cost to plant out a, a, a individual tree, our, our current cost, it's about $310 with root barriers, in most of our, our planning scenarios, we don't use root barriers, and that's about $285 per tree, to plant out a 24-inch box, both the cost of the tree and the labor to install them with the materials.
Okay, and last question is, the trees that we have in Montrose, because that's another business district, versus the one in downtown, what are the, is it the same type of a tree that we have in downtown, or are there different kinds?
Mayor Carpetti, and that, the pallet for Montrose is, is, is pretty different from what we have. There are some consistencies, there's pear trees up there, which we have on South Brann, south of Broadway, there's some of those that are in Montrose, but predominantly, what you're seeing in Montrose, there's plum, tababoya, they're, they're not trees that are, are on Brann as well.
And, but they're large trees, I mean, as far as being business district and blocking the signs and everything, they have really large trees over there, and somehow, they're surviving. I think it's very wrong to trim the trees so heavily, again, I'm repeating myself, to just make way for a sign. I know, as a business owner, I know I want to have a sign, I want to have visibility, but trees are part of the business district anyway, so. We got to be, I think this is a demonstration program, but I don't want to go start removing all the trees from Brann and try to put these little sticks of six-foot, eight-foot trees that, it's going to take another 10 years to grow to be what the, what, what it shows in the, in the photograph, so. And those, even, they're going to block the, because if you trim this tree, to make it only have a treetop, you, this tree is going to die as well, so we need to find something that we can live with, and everybody will be happy.
So it can, it seems like it's counterintuitive to have a tree there for shade and pedestrian comfort, and then trim it back so you can see a sign, and not have any shade, so then you're taking, you're negating what the purpose of the tree is. And I think that most of us have traveled to Europe, and where, where they have tree-lined streets, and, and none of them, that I recall, are, are tall enough or trimmed, so that you can't see, so that you can see, you know, storefront names. I mean, you can see the storefronts, but you can't see necessarily names, but they're beautiful to walk on. They're pedestrian-friendly, and it's very nice, so.
All those darn cars that go up and down the street where they want that visibility. I think what you'll ultimately see, because I think we're sensitive and agree with everything council said, is to try to find balance, and finding the best balance for the longest term, as you've noted, some of the great cities around the world, is the right tree. That'll help, that way, we don't have the over-trimming issue, and we do develop a nice canopy that is shade and area for people to walk. We will ultimately get there, and it won't come at the deforestation of downtown Glendale, it'll be done in a systemic way, so that it's phased in, so it doesn't look bald, that it all works together.
I have one question for Coco. If I, if I, if I... I have one question for Coco. If I remember right, we have about 47,000 trees in the city, and this contract maintains all of those trees?
I believe the number of 47,000, 40,700 trees actually is more with Public Works and all the street trees. Parks has roughly about 6,000 trees within the park system. And yes, the funds that you see within the original contract and the increased allocation is for maintenance of all the trees that are listed in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Call please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
B is Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks Regarding Glorieta Park Electrical and Irrigational Improvements Project. B1 is motion awarding contract in connection with specification number 3645 to ARC Construction, Inc., in amount not to exceed $589,000 and reject all other bids. Two is a resolution to appropriate $60,000. So, Chau.
Yes, sir. You recently approved the plans and specs for this project at Glorieta Park. We have put it out to bid, had several firms walk the bid with us. We ended up getting bids from two, which I know causes the Council some angst. However, the bids themselves were pretty tightly grouped together. Our engineer's estimate was $550,000 for this work. The low apparent bid came in at 589. The references for ARC Construction Incorporated do bear out. We have done work with them. We have been satisfied with them. And so we are asking for you to approve that contract plus the contingency of 10% for a total, and construction management for a total cost of $662,900 for the Glorieta Park project. So if you have any specific questions about the park project or the specs that you had approved, certainly either Rubik or Coco can answer those for you.
So our contract, our estimate was, engineer's estimate was 550, now it's 660?
It was 550. The bid was 589. And then we have a contingency of 10%, which would be pretty standard for a project that we think is relatively straightforward. And then we add in construction management for the project managers who will manage the project through Rubik Shop from engineering. And so the total combined cost of all three of those items, $662,900. So the other item, the second item, is a resolution of appropriation, actually asking you to move $60,000 from the recreation fund over for this project.
And one last question that I have is, at 550, the engineer's estimate, it did not include the contingency?
No, sir. No, we wouldn't do that on contingency.
Okay. Mr. Agajanian?
Can you again say what's the construction manager, management? Is this for our people?
Yes.
Not paying?
That's correct, sir. That's correct. So it isn't a bonus that you would pay to a private contractor.
How come you, we were not adding that figure before?
Because we know what our costs are for Rubik's engineers to go through and manage, push the paper for any kind of permitting that's necessary, any issues that arise. Any of his construction engineers are very much aware of whatever the costs and impacts may be of this project. We know what they make. We know what our fully burdened cost is. So we would hold that separate from anything we would ever ask the private contractor to bid on because they're going to take our cost and mark it up by some percentage of profit. So we ask them just for the work that is being done. Then we'll add a contingency on top of that for anything that might have been unforeseen. And then the cost for Rubik's folks to manage the contract through his engineering division and project management folks, that's basically it. Rubik, did I miss anything?
No, that's, that covers it. So like Mr. Ochoa mentioned, that number is constant regardless of the amount of the bid. It's going to cost one of my project managers $15,000 to oversee the project from start to completion regardless of the amount of the bid.
I just don't remember. You were adding this before. We had just the contract bid price and we had 10%. That was what you were showing us, but I understand you have to assign people to work with them, to supervise them, what they are doing eventually. So it costs us money.
So Councilmember Agajanian, every time you see Public Works taking on a project that is for another department, like libraries, like parks, we do appropriate this funding because that client department pays for the cost of one of Public Works managers. Typically, though, when it's, you're right, when it's a Public Works project, a core engineering project, you won't see that number because that's part of the project already.
So you are charging the other department, actually?
Exactly right.
That's how he recovers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, a comment. I hope that this is staged to have the minimum impact on the use of the park.
Yes, Councilman Najarian, we will start the project sometime in December after the AYSO games season is over.
Okay, I mean, there has to be some disruption, obviously, but I hope you're staging it and managing it to cause the least disruption. I trust you with that. I won't ask for any details. I'll move the item at eight, eight B1.
Call please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. You said eight B1 and two?
Yes.
And one and two?
How many subparts do we have?
One and two.
Eight B1, two, the entire item?
Eight B1 and?
Eight B1 and two, the appropriation as well.
Next item, please.
C is Director of Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between City and the Glendale City Employees Association and Resolutions Addressing Terms and Conditions of Said MOU and Classification and Compensation of Affected City Employees. C1 is a Resolution Approving and Adopting the MOU Between the City of Glendale and GCEA Commencing July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. Two is a Resolution Providing for the Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Employees Covered by the GCEA MOU Including Hourly and Confidential Classifications. Three is a Resolution to Appropriate $2,359,818.
So, Chau?
Yes, sir. This is something that has been a long time coming and really is a reflection of the city council's principles of compensation management. Every year, as part of your budget, you adopt a series of principles that articulate, one, the city will only enter obligations that it reasonably believes that it can pay, and two, that city council believes that we should be at the average in the compensation market, but not above, even though we expect far more than the average from our employees. Indeed, part of our mantra is focused on exceptional customer service. To that end, the folks in GCEA have entered into good-faith negotiations. It was very difficult at different times because at this point, in a reflection of where the economy has been and a reflection where their association altogether has been by way of wage and hour issues, there were far more wants and needs than there were resources. The negotiations, as I say, were rather protracted, but I am pleased to report to you that we have the basis here for a multi-year MOU that abides by our principles of compensation management and was approved by well in excess of two-thirds of the GCEA membership, which was no small task. Everyone would love to have more in their pay bucket, but at the end of the day, the business of government still has to be affordable. So we have for you this multi-year agreement. If you have specific questions about what is included in the GCEA MOU, certainly Mr. Doyle can answer those. And you also have members of the GCEA board here available to you. Matt, if you want to give just a couple of quick items, because I know there's going to be a couple of questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is a three-year memorandum of understanding between the city and the GCEA. The GCEA represents the largest group of our city employees, essentially all of our non-sworn and non-electrical water and power employees. So it totals in about 700 employees. As Mr. Ochoa said, it was somewhat of a long and protracted series of negotiations. I think, ultimately, very beneficial to both the city and employees. The primary issues relate to compensation and benefits and really trying to maintain a competitive stance so as to not lose employees or to have retention or recruitment problems. This three-year agreement, which came, it took about four and a half months for us to resolve the negotiations. It will run through June of 2020. It's a good feeling to have some security in place for that long. Some of the highlights of this, I'd say a very modest set of proposals on behalf of both the employees and the city. One and a half percent adjustment each of the three years of the agreement. It's not a lot, but then again, it is, it's something that, you know, again, provides some degree of security for our employees. Additionally, there were several adjustments to a lot of the special pay categories, some of the specialty issues that some of our employees with unique skill sets that would benefit them. Many of those are in the police department area, and you see, you know, one example might be, we have a sort of a leadership stipend for our community service officers and police, those who agree to take on what's called a senior community service officer role, where they do training, they do leadership, they do development of other employees, and not something that is, you know, easy to do in addition to your current job. We increased the pay there. There's also with our police dispatchers, we allotted a, what's known as a post-piece officer standards and training communications assignment pay for them on top of their base salary. We have several additional pays that were modified slightly in the integrated waste management area. Our mechanical mechanics who work on the sanitation vehicles and trucks, in addition to some of our code enforcement officers who deal with hazardous exposures, certification pay. We also have our public works department, an incentive program whereby, and this is a program that Mr. Hargrove put together, who's here, whereby there's cross-training is made available to many of the employees who want to learn other areas of the business. And, you know, with that, learning of the other areas, there's a little additional pay for them. So in the case of certain things that come up, that we have a workforce that's a little more agile and able to deal with different areas outside of their respected work assignments. We also looked at our medical insurance costs, and again, in exchange for not necessarily granting a very high COLA, we did a break in two of the three years of the MOU. Instead of doing a 50-50 split of the increased medical costs, the city would pick up 75% for two of those years. So the agreement does have many little items such as that, which we felt were essential to getting this agreed upon by the majority of the group. And I think as Mr. Ochoa said, this isn't a, an agreement that's going to, you know, break the bank, and certainly it's not where our employees want it to be. But I think in the end, all sides viewed it as very fair. And again, as Mr. Ochoa said, the GCEA requires a two-thirds majority in order to ratify an MOU, and they exceeded that by about 72% voted in favor of this. So with that, if you have any further questions and specifics, this, the resolutions that you have address not only the MOU, but also the classification and compensation salaries that are pertaining to that, in addition to our hourly employees. We don't want to forget them as well. They're a very key component to keeping this organization going. So with that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Councilmember Agajanian?
On page three, it reads, "The MOU enables the GCEA to formally participate in this process by nominating 12 classifications each year for consideration during the annual compensation alignment process." What it means?
That's a, that's a great question, to the extent that, as Matt indicates, we try to pay our employees at average. We know that a number of jurisdictions are paying better than what Glendale pays. So because we try to hold the line and really cannot afford to give significant cost of living adjustments to all classifications in our various bargaining groups, what we do is this program called compensation alignment, whereby we will take, in connection with, or in concert with the associations, take a selected group of classifications, survey those across the market, find out how far away they are from the average, and then increase the top step, top step of their range to that market average. As opposed to other groups that might move the center point to that average, we do the top step, hoping, expecting that there's a motivation for those employees to continue to do the good work that they're doing, advance through their classification, and ultimately reach what would be that new top step. So it's a means for the city to best.
But the GCEA is offering that?
No, this is something that the city's been doing for the last several years now.
But do we?
So we, in the context of the meet and confer negotiations, we are telling GCEA, we're agreeing with GCEA, that we will take the classifications that you would like to have studied and move forward. But the city, now we think we're in third year, fourth?
This is the third year.
This is, currently is the third year for comp alignment. And it's a, it's a balance between having to be relevant in the market, yet still recognizing there's a limitation to what we can pay.
Just 12 classifications means 12 classes?
If I could add, Councilman Agajanian, as Mr. Ochoa said, we've been doing this for the past few years. And typically, what occurs in that process is the executive team gets together and proposes classifications that need to be studied, and then we go back with, in this case, it would be the GCEA, and talk about those classifications to be studied. The difference is, in this MOU, we've agreed to actually allow the association to propose those classifications on their own. Now, there will be some collaboration, of course, with the executives as well, but they will get to pick those that they feel may or may not be below the labor market. And it's a much more targeted way of looking at those areas where we may not be as competitive as we would like to be. So the main issue is that this is giving them a much bigger say in those than in previous years.
So their salaries, basically, for that 12 classification, you will raise after a year. It's not going to be constant for three years?
Not necessarily. There's no, there's no guarantee whatsoever.
No, but you will consider?
Yes, yes.
Based on what the outcome of that survey is. So if we were to do a survey of dispatchers, and it turns out they were at market, well, then there would be no adjustment because they're at the average, their top step. If it turned out like we had found with jailers a couple, couple years ago?
Yes.
Jailers were very far behind the market, and jailers are actually quite difficult to recruit, train, and field, then we moved rather quickly to include them into the comp alignment strategy.
Okay. Now, where the resolution is, so this is, it says Section 4.1, General Services, General Services Service. So what we are doing here, do you just throw job class and then salary class, the same number as job class, and then there are names we put there? Are we moving like to the employees to higher class? What we are doing here? What is the purpose of all these pages?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Agajanian, what you're referring to is the Classification and Compensation Resolution, which lists all of the classifications that are affected by this, this action. These are GCEA-related positions, as well as, there are some in there that are hourly, part-time, which are also being addressed. Even though they're not represented by the GCEA, the legal authority to grant any adjustments there have to be included in that. So these are listed in that portion of that resolution. And then at the very back of this, of this report, there's a graph which corresponds with the salary range numbers that actually list the monthly salaries for those positions. It's at the very back of this, of this entire report.
I saw that before.
Nope. Yeah, there you go. It's the start of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the medical, with the medical renewal, for the first two years of the contract, city pays 75% and the employees pay 25%, and then in that third year of the contract, goes back to 50-50?
That is correct.
Do you understand that?
It reverts to 50-50.
Okay. And I noticed on a lot of the positions, if a certification is... And I noticed on a lot of the positions, if a certification is, is gained by the employee, they get a bump in salary monthly, let's say. Can you give me like an idea of the average time it takes to get that certification? Where they get the different certifications? I know there are a lot of different ones, but is there some sort of a, an average time it takes to?
Uh, yeah.
No? Do they have to go somewhere else like to?
It really varies amongst, amongst the different work groups. The, the one I referenced earlier involving post, it's a peace officer standards and training, that's a certificate. And this one is applicable to the communications operators. As far as I know, that takes several months, once they, once they come on board to get that, that certification. Others, there may be some in the, in the tree trimming field, if you get an arborist certification. Those I know require a lot of schooling, it could take six months to a year to get.
And do they do that while they're on the job or do they do it on weekends and after?
Those types of certifications typically are done outside of work.
Outside of work?
Yes.
And so to that end, you have a group of folks that are trying to better themselves, oftentimes at their own dime, increasing their competencies and thus making themselves more valuable in a context wherein we've dropped probably close to 500 full-time equivalent positions over the last six years. And we're still, if you look at our key performance indicators, you look at the goal attainment for each year that the council reviews, the deliverables are still there, but a lot of it is streamlining, a lot of it is technology, and a lot of it is this notion of competency-based pay, really looking at people and the attributes that they have. And again, I can't say enough for, about GCA willing to step up into that brave new world and realize it's different than the way it's been done before. But you're good on them to be able to, to want to belly up to that bar and see that's where things are going.
Well, I wanted everyone to understand that situation so that they would understand more why they're getting this extra compensation. And I think, I think that's, that's it for me.
Okay.
Oh, do you have any idea how many we're talking about? How many employees we're talking about that are eligible for that sort of certification, you know, step up? Is it everyone or some or?
No, the extra pay, again, out of a bargaining unit of 700, I would say probably 60 to 70, maybe 80. But it's, it's a small portion, probably about 10% of the whole bargaining unit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian?
Well, obviously, I'm going to vote to approve these resolutions, but I want the folks to know at home who the GCA members are. These aren't our public safety people who we sing praises to, and we just sang praises today. These are our unsung heroes. These are the folks who do their job day in, day out, and keep the city running smoothly. From garbage collection to planning, to code enforcement, to libraries, parks, public works, they're really the backbone of the city. But nobody wants to grab them and say, can I have a picture with you like they do, you know, police or fire? And I feel for you. I feel for, for the GCA members as the largest working block in the city. I don't think you get the, the praise and recognition that truly you, you deserve. No one brings you food when you've had a hard day at work, when you're swamped with planning or with any of the other jobs that, that are in front of you. I want to thank the, the GCA board with whom I met several months ago and who made it clear to me what the needs were, what the situation was. I mean, those, those thoughts and those issues that we discussed, I carried with me into the closed session. Of course, I wasn't there at the negotiation table, but I can assure you that those, those issues of extra workload, of comparison to other cities, to fear of losing members to other cities, to some of the morale issues, really resounded with me. And I, and I feel for that and I want to thank the board and President Gale for letting me know about that. I wish we were in a situation where we could throw a whole lot of money in and double or triple these, these cost of living increases, but we just can't. But I don't want you to go away thinking that you're not appreciated and you're not recognized, because you really are. It's, you know, it's unfortunate you don't walk around with badges or guns or things like that, but your work is just as critical, sometimes even more critical to the proper functioning of this city. And that's what makes Glendale one of the best cities. So people at home watching and to the board and to the GCA members, really, we appreciate what you do and please keep up the good work. We couldn't, we wouldn't be here without you.
I have one card, Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while he's coming up-
Yes.
To, to add upon what Councilmember Njerian said, this event that occurred over the weekend would not have been possible. The, the city's response would not have been possible without the members of the GCA. I'm talking about they fired dispatchers who worked, you know, all day, all night to make sure everything was dispatched appropriately. Police dispatchers, these are all GCA employees. There are lots of public works employees out, you know, blocking streets, barricades, and parks department employees. Pretty much every department participated in that, in that response. And without the GCA, that it would not have been as successful as it was, so.
Mr. Mohill?
Thank you, Mayor Capedan, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilmember, when you all ran for council, you said all the right things to get elected. Some stated stop the illegal transfer from GWP to the general fund. Some even stated you were going to promote pension reform. About six months after you won your council seats, you are not acting on behalf of the folks who elected you. Councilmembers Devine and Njerian, both said we cannot get out of CalPERS and therefore you do nothing but Band-Aid fixes. Two college professors with renowned credentials have both stated getting out of CalPERS would be difficult but doable. And in the long run, it would be cheaper for the stakeholders. A recent article brought to your attention in the Los Angeles Daily News on dated August the 10th, 2017, it stated the number of six-figure pensioners who belong to CalPERS has risen 63% since 2015, excuse me, since 2012 and still rising. Of the hundreds of cities, counties, and other government agencies that belong to CalPERS, 100,000 club of elite pensioners, the jewel city Glendale has the distinction of being part of the top 25 worst managed agencies. Wow, what an honor to put on our website. Top is Santa Clarita County with 861 employees. Number five is the bankrupt city of Santa Ana. And pulling up close from behind is the jewel city Glendale ranked number 12. When was the last time this council said no to a pay increase for city employees, Mr. Njerian? Why did council give our overpaid city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney pay raises for exactly doing the same job at which increased our pension debt? Councilmembers, you have the duty to say no to any city employees, no matter how much our city manager tells you otherwise. What the city manager doesn't tell you is that we are competing with the bankrupt city of Santa Ana, Santa Ana, as the number five worst managed city, county, or government agency in the CalPERS system. Since Monsieur Ochoa came to Glendale, we have reduced our city payroll about 25%, as he was saying, 500 employees tonight. But the remaining employees earn more income and pension debt has risen from about $1.2 billion in 2012 and today is pushing nearly $2 billion. You recently went along with our shrewd city manager and changed the accounting principles of GWP books so as to continue illegally transferring $20 million annually from the general fund. Let us not forget the new $26 million irrevocable trust fund you set up for our overpaid CalPERS employees. You need to say no, councilmember and Mayor, and Mayor Capedan.
Okay, I was butchering a lot of last names tonight. You, you, I love to do one.
One last word, again. You need to say no, Mayor Vartan Capetian.
Thank you.
A big fat no to all the union bosses. Have a nice evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mohill. I have, yes.
Go ahead. Oh, another card?
No, I have, I don't have any other card. Do you have a question or I can ask my question?
No, I just, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
I have a couple of technical questions. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here tonight, because I usually, all of us, we usually base our decisions on facts. When, when we, every time we, it's time for negotiation, contract renegotiation, we do an average and we tell our, we look at our, our city, we compare our city to other cities and average it out and see how much over or under they are compared to our neighboring cities. And I wanted to know the GCA employees, how much below were there at the time of negotiation?
Mr. Mayor, we tried to do that prior to negotiations, but with a group this size, the number of, as I said, 700, we, we were unable to do specific surveys for all of the, all of the represented classifications.
But overall, they were, I, I know that they were below the, the average of the 700-
Our, our experience-
700 members of this large organization, they were below average of other, you know, comparable cities. Now, my other question was, when was the last time they, they received a raise and how much was that?
Mr. Mayor, the previous MOU, which ran from 2014 to 2017, they received, it was a three-year MOU. The first year, there was no COLA. The second year, there was a 1% COLA, that was 2015. And then in the third year of that MOU, it was a, a 3% COLA, which was offset by a 1% increase in their CalPERS cost-sharing contribution. So really, it was a net of a 2%. So that was zero, one, and two. And in the preceding six years, there was no cost of living increase at all, from roughly from 2009 to 2015, zero. Plus, during that period of time, and this was the depths of the recession, they not only got no, no cost of living increase, this group, but we actually took money from them in the form of increased cost sharing under CalPERS with both their, their pensions as well as asking them to pay more in their medical.
That's, that's what I was going to-
So they went backwards for about six years.
So since, from 2009 until end of this contract, which will be 2020, they, they will have about seven and a half percent increase in 12 years, which is almost half a percent here. I'm, I'm just averaging it out. So I don't know anybody out there, including myself, who, you know, I don't want to put pressure on my city manager here, but who would work less than 2% or 3% increase a year. I mean, we all go to work to make some money, we're not just... And this group made the ultimate sacrifice every time and all the time. I couldn't agree more with my colleague, Mr. Njerian. You've always been there for us, you always did the right thing, you made larger sacrifices for our city, and we do appreciate it. We, we don't look at our employees as employees. This is one big family that we are a member of. I'm, I'm very proud to be a member of this family. And I want to thank you all for everything you do for our city. We had this, this emergency, this natural disaster, and everybody was there. It was the management, it was the public works, parks, GWP, planning, where to go fire communication, they're all members of the GCA. I want to go on the record and say, between the heat and the, and the fire, we did not have power outages. And I don't know any city that didn't have any power outage in, in the last two, three weeks. And, and everything else was in order. The city was being run perfectly, the trash is being picked up every time. You don't have the problems that many of the other cities do. So I want to, I want to base my decision on facts again, and between from 2009 to 2020, 7% or seven and a half percent increase is the least we can do. So we want to thank you again. And with that, if there is any more comments, we will listen to it. If not, uh-
I have just a, I'll just be very brief. I, I just want to say that, and I'm sorry Mr. Mohill left, because he, you know, this is not the group that's going to have, get $100,000, $150,000 when you retire. You are a group that, what I refer to as the boots on the ground. You are doing that work, that grinding out every single day. And, and as has been said, you may not often hear it, but believe me, we are with you and we sing your praises all the time because we know that you're doing a great job. And I agree, I, I wish that we could give you what you want, give you what you're, you're working for and what you feel you, you deserve, but you, I'm thankful that you understand our budget constraints, what we're dealing with. And, you know, I am more than happy to approve this particular resolution, contract.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that motion, Councilmember Devine?
Oh, sure. I will move the item.
She moved AC 1, 2, and 3, and I seconded.
Vocal? Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Capedan?
Yes. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, next item is Oral Communications, if you wish to revisit that?
Yes, I do. I have Mr. Anjanik.
Yes.
For the record, this is a five-minute portion.
Yes, yes.
The gentleman's been waiting here, so I want to give them a chance. Comment, go ahead.
Yes. [unintelligible]
City clerk, if you want to get this gentleman's information, so we can let them know where-
But we'll certainly get Mr. Zaturian's info and pass it along to staff.
Next speaker is Dan Brotman.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Dan Brotman. Little over a month ago, I wrote a letter to Glendale Water and Power Commission with my concerns about the Grace and Repowering Proposals, a proposal. So far, I haven't received a reply. I wanted to read the letter I wrote into the record, but it's too long for five minutes, so I'll just summarize it. Let me go right to the punchline. Glendale Water and Power's proposal to build a 250-megawatt facility costing an estimated $340 million raises serious concerns, both financial and environmental. I ask the council to halt the process and honestly assess the plan against a range of clean energy alternatives. I'll start with the financial concerns. First off, the proposed facility is designed to produce more power than Glendale expects to use. Why this would be so when the state is facing a power glut is not at all clear to me, but the proposal clearly suggests the city would need to find buyers to take off the excess power. This would put ratepayers at serious risk of market supply and demand fluctuations and is totally unnecessary. Second, the proposal is built on outdated financial assumptions. It uses a cost of carbon figure of $37 a ton in 2035, whereas economists are modeling much higher prices for carbon under the new cap and trade program. The best estimates right now are for prices well over $60 a ton and possibly as high as $100 a ton by 2035. At the same time, the proposal assumes the $340 million cost will be amortized over 30 years, which is a normal useful life assumption, but we know the legislature is getting ready to vote on SB 100, which would put California on the path to 100% clean energy or clean electricity by 2045. Even if the plant were up and running by 2020, which is a stretch, we would probably only get 25 years out of it. A more honest financial analysis will- A more honest financial analysis will make the proposal look a lot less attractive. Finally, we've seen dramatic technology and market changes since 2015, when the proposal was first made. Prices for wind and solar have declined sharply and are expected to keep falling, at the same time battery storage technology is coming of age and battery prices are also falling fast. The proposal made short shrift of these types of clean energy alternatives. Basically, writing them off is not ready for prime time. That was hardly true then, it's certainly not true now. All of this undermines the conclusion that a $340 million mega-plant is the financially sensible solution for Glendale and that greener alternatives don't make sense. In fact, building a large gas plant at the Grayson is financially irresponsible and likely to burden Glendale ratepayers for decades to come. Now to the environmental questions. I don't have time to get into the, a whole discourse about the risks of climate change today. It's obvious to any thinking person that something is changing and it's not for the better. All I need to say is Houston, closer to home, we know that California is heating up and drying out, and this will bring more and more fires like the ones we've just experienced. This is serious business. This needs to be priority number one. On environmental grounds alone, we should seriously question the need to build a new fossil-fuel plant that will be spewing carbon into the atmosphere for decades. It's not a surprise that the city of Los Angeles has recently put a moratorium on its three outstanding repowering proposals at Haynes Harbor and Scattergood, and it's rethinking whether current and future power needs can be met with a combination of renewables, storage, and more aggressive demand management. This is just prudent common sense. All I'm asking is that Glendale show the same level of caution and common sense before it saddles us with a $340 million white elephant. Thank you.
Sure. Just very briefly, and I would defer to Mr. Zern. He's not here with us tonight, but he will be. My apologies to Mr. Brotman if he was not responding to my, my understanding was that he was responded to with his rather extensive letter. At the end of the day, what we look at by way of Grayson, the Grayson repowering is an opportunity to replace what we have here today. And I think the, the inverse of what Mr. Brotman has described to you by way of being at the whim of the spot market and market forces is really what we're trying to guard against. We would not have a plate value on that power plant in excess of what it is today, in excess of what Glendale's needs are, so we really aren't looking at building a merchant plant. We want to be able to provide for a, a load that we have, as we saw peak at 347 megawatts, the highest we've ever had, be able to satisfy the needs that we may face as a community for the next 30 years. And I do believe that in 30 years, we will not be talking of gas plants. In fact, if the council, bless you, were to, to approve at the appropriate time following the, the full environmental review, if that were appropriate and we were to move forward, this may very well be or would be the, the last gas plant you ever approve, to the extent that solar and, and geothermal and wind are out there and they are abundant, by all means they are, and in fact, we take full use of them in meeting our RPS, our Renewable Portfolio Standards, as GWP. So it's, it's difficult to accept that Glendale Water and Power and that you, as the Board of Directors of this corporation, municipal corporation, do not accept the obligation to go as green and carbon-free as possible. Don't forget the fact that we live in California and have the most aggressive and progressive environmental standards anywhere in the entire nation, and yet we're meeting those standards. We're meeting them today and we will meet them in the, in the future. There is a bill, SB 100, that would contemplate, I believe, by 2045, going 100% renewable. The question is, is it totally renewable or is it carbon-free, carbon-neutral? Different definitions and the devil is certainly in the details, but I think the point is that we will meet the standard, whatever it is. But heretofore, we would like the flexibility before jumping on that particular bandwagon to ensure that it is in the best interest of all of our Glendale ratepayers and the community overall. I don't know that there's a whole lot of daylight between what Mr. Brotman wants and what GWP has brought as its preliminary recommendations to the council. It's going to be a function of how we get there, to the extent that we are satisfying our RPS today, we intend to in the future. And the one thing that was left out of this discussion, the term that you did not hear in any bit of that presentation was transmission. The end of the day, this is all governed by how we transmit the energy that we need to us. And if we can't count on that transmission, we need to have at least the opportunity to be self-sufficient when those very, very significant electrical load days come, as we have seen just in this past two weeks. Beyond that, I'll stop there. Certainly, I will tell you that everything has been taken into consideration that Mr. Brotman has raised. He makes very good arguments, and certainly we are not giving that short shrift. It'll be fully part of the discussion at the appropriate time. Mr. Zern, I'm sure, will be here at your next council meeting, and if it's council's pleasure, I know in the future, we will be bringing back, when we have a full council, either at the end of this month, beginning of next month, an update on all of our environmental-related projects.
Mr. Agajianian? I think, since Mr. Zern is not here, I think the speaker, Mr. Brotman, was saying that Glendale Water and Power Commissioners, they didn't answer him back, not Mr., the Director of Glendale Water and Power.
I, I took it as the letter, I've seen the letter that Mr. Brotman wrote. Either way, we will figure it out and make sure that is satisfied.
I don't want the Commissioners answering.
On Mr., Mr. Zern's absence to be blamed for. All right, thank you.
What's next, Mr.? Thank you, Mr. Zern.
Gentlemen.
If there's any new business, otherwise, all we seek is a motion to adjourn and a second.
Move to adjourn. Here you are.